Is the great big small bank, big enough to offer financial strength and small enough to know who we're protecting. To learn more about...
Are we on official or guest?
Official.
Official or guest?
Official.
Just ask her right now. We're also logging around here all the way back here.
Oops. Yeah, I'm gonna have to because I don't know username, password, and all that.
Can you log in?
It normally does, but I didn't remember my deal.
You have to re-log in and create a new password, probably.
Chris, are you good or no?
No.
Do you need some help?
Yeah, this isn't even accepting a guest.
That's because you have to go into the other one and put in your password.
Yeah, so if you go under...
City of Wyoming's official.
Official. And it's gonna ask you, "What's your password?" You're logging, re-logging to the computer. So... See Doc?
Okay. Can you just tell him to stop scaring us more and more and more?
Passwords? Lots of passwords.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. It's 7:32. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and if you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Wykem was unable to be with us this evening, so you're kinda stuck with me. I have a brand-new computer. It's left-handed to me, so I'm gonna be... You know, if I get in the weeds, I'll let you know. Okay? And this is like riding a bike. I fell off yesterday, and I really am not wanting to get back on in the second meeting. So, here we go. Clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Kerry Wykem. Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelaw.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. Councilman Wells.
I move to approve the January 17, 2023, city council agenda as presented.
I have first.
Second.
It's been first and seconded.
Wait, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for January 17, 2023, city council agenda to allow Tanya Lumen to take her oath to be seated on Ward 2.
I'd second that for discussion.
It's been first and seconded. Discussion?
Do you have questions?
Yeah, I mean, just explain what you're... I'd like you to explain everything.
I feel Tanya Lumen has made it very clear that she would like to take the oath of office. It sounds like there's some misunderstandings, and she's here tonight and willing to take the oath. And Ward 2 has voted for her and wants her to take the seat after having a Ward 2 meeting tonight and listening to everybody talk. That's... Seems to be the general consensus from there and from the City of Wyoming's residents.
My only questions and concerns is who is here that would be able to give an oath of office, and is there a judge here that's gonna... would do that and is going to give it? I have no problem with serving with anybody. If the ward represented that was voted on that representative, if she could take the seat, then if there's someone here that is willing to and give an oath of office, then that's...
Ms. Wendy?
Sure.
Do we have someone that can give oath of office tonight?
The city clerk is authorized, but we do not have anybody tonight who could give the oath.
Isn't she not say the oath without...
No. She has to... You have to go through that whole process. So, as of right now, we don't have someone who can give the oath?
Correct.
Or we don't have someone that can give the oath?
Correct.
In the building?
Why not? The city clerk can.
I cannot force the city clerk to give the oath. She's not my employee.
She's a public...
She is. You're correct. She is a public employee. And she can give the oath. It's up to her to give it. It's not up to us to tell her to give it.
So she has to deny it?
That's up to her.
We, the people, want Tanya to take the oath.
So one person's discretion?
It's always to the discretion of the person giving the oath.
So not the judge either because, you know, the judge has the discretion of swearing you in? Is that what you're saying?
We're sworn in by the judge.
Right.
Yes, but we don't have the authority to give the oath.
So the judge could refuse to swear all of y'all in, right?
Yes.
Interesting.
Could've.
She could've, yes.
Very interesting. So where do we go from here? Yeah.
Well, at this point, if there's no one to give the...
Voted in, but you all won't swear her in.
We cannot swear her in. We cannot do that.
You're gonna leave that decision to the county clerk?
We don't have a choice. That's not a choice for us. We don't have the authority to swear in.
So it's the city clerk's choice.
It is the city clerk's choice. Yes, she's the one swearing in. That's... She's the one that takes the oath that allows her to swear in. We do not take that oath. Yes.
That can be done by any public notary.
Yes.
That's willing.
Yes.
Can swear you into the...
Yes. Actually...
The statute specifies the city clerk.
That's ours specifies that? I'll read to you who can do that. Justices of the Wyoming Supreme Court, Justice of the Wyoming District Court, Judge of the United States District Court for the District of Wyoming, Clerk of the Wyoming Supreme Court or Wyoming District Court or the Wyoming County Court, Clerk of the United States District Court for the District of Wyoming, Commissioners, Magistrates Appointed by Authority of Law of the United States or of Wyoming, Notary Republics, County Clerks, County Treasurers, Clerks of School Districts in Wyoming, Clerks of any Incorporated City, Town in Wyoming, County Commissioners within their respective county.
So a Notary Republic, any notary can do it?
Any notary that wants to do it can do it. Yes. If you are a notary. I'm just reading from what the statute is.
State statute.
Is it provided through the link?
So, 151109, when a clerk may administer oaths, it says, "The clerk of any city or town may administer oaths to persons for any city or town purpose for which an oath is required or authorized by law. In adding his, I don't know the word, to any oath, he administers, the clerk shall attach the official seal to the city town to..."
Is that... Say that one.
Draft?
Draft.
Draft.
Yeah, it's an odd word.
Yeah.
So is there anybody else in here who doesn't know? If the city clerk is declining, can't she verbally decline, please?
Do her not.
Okay, I'm gonna read what it says.
Can I speak up?
What was that, 109? When the clerk may... "May" is the key word here. May administer the oath. She's not required to administer oath. She may administer oath. So, the decision is hers to make. It is not ours to force her to do.
So if she declines, what happens then?
If there's nobody that will administer the oath, then the oath cannot be administered. We cannot seat anyone.
Okay. Is the position still considered vacant?
At this moment, it's considered vacant, yes.
But fillable? Like it's vacant and you guys can fill it?
Yes. Yeah, it's no intent to leave the position open.
No, but the council can appoint whom they choose.
Without giving...
Whoever was voted in.
Yes, that was all described in when we set forth how we were going to go about the process of picking. Yes.
So the person who was voted in, the clerk can decline to give them the oath, and then the council... Will you hang around? Can appoint whom they choose.
What's that?
I said, so the person who was voted in, the county... The city clerk can decline to give them the oath, and then the council can appoint whom they choose.
And then they will take the oath. No matter who we pick, they will still...
The person who was voted in will not get the position because the city clerk will refuse to give them the oath.
Whomever we pick, whomever puts... Whoever gives them the oath may refuse to give them the...
Who voted for?
I can't help you with that, ma'am. I don't have authority over that. We do not have that authority. Here.
We're giving it to the city clerk.
The city clerk, by state statute, can give the oath.
Or can she not to?
May. Yes, just like any judge in any...
So why are we even voting for that position then?
They give them the oath. The judge will come in and give the oath. We don't ever give the oath. That's not us. We don't do that.
I understand.
We can pick someone, and the judge can then refuse to give them the oath as well or give them the oath. That's based on whether they want to give that oath or not give that oath. That's always in their purview. It's never in ours.
If you give them the oath.
Could you actually just stand up for me so I know who I'm picking from here?
As a registered voter, I have not heard the clerk deny or refuse to present the oath.
Or even be asked.
Or even be asked.
Okay. That's fine.
If we get a notary here, could we get his one, get hers one in?
Ms. Wendy? Is that a yes or no question?
I can go pick them up right now.
Could we recess the meeting?
Hold on one second, I just need it.
In the actual statute that governs both elections and the vacancies in office, the only reference to oath-giving is the clerk. So I don't know that that other statute that allows for other people to give oaths, I don't know that that applies to this.
I just read it.
No, I'm just... I'm asking if that... The swearing in can still occur.
I do not know.
So, we don't have... We haven't gotten an answer yet back from the state about whether we can do it after the fact where we can swear in the elected person.
That's correct.
Because we haven't declared the vacancy.
Correct.
Right? Okay. This issue, I'm not really prepared to answer it because I don't know how to answer it. I read to you what it says. It's, Lynn, it is entirely up to you to choose to do what you wish to do. The answer was no. So, now, Darryl.
Sorry. Can you...
I'm sorry, Darryl.
No, you're fine. Can you give me the...
Councilman.
State statute that you just read the number clues.
It is from Wyoming Statute Title 1, Chapter 2, Under the Oaths. And it's 112101, from there on down.
Thank you.
I can have them make copies if you want one.
No, I got it here.
So now, yes?
My question is, the... Oh my gosh. I'm sorry, guys. My brain's not working. What's on the table right now? Can we even vote to have that added to the agenda with the fact that we don't have somebody available to swear her in?
As long as there's no one to swear in, we can't... You can't add it to the agenda unless there's someone here to do the job.
So we'll have to vote this down?
Or we could put it on the agenda, but then we can't...
We can't vote to put Tanya on or not. That's not...
The notary's on the way.
That's not our... It's not in our authority.
So I guess I'm not understanding the question. What do you...
So, I don't understand how we... Why we would put it on the agenda if there's... If it's not something we are capable of voting in. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
Yes, that makes sense to me.
Does this actually become on the agenda? So does this become on the agenda?
That's what he's trying to... He's trying to add it to the agenda. That's the attempt. We're trying to add it to the agenda. It's whether we can add it to the agenda if we have no way of actually having an oath passed.
Without somebody, a notary, straight?
Right.
Greg here, present. Ready? I would...
Yeah, we put it at the end of the agenda.
I believe it has to go under unfinished business if it goes anywhere, okay? If that's the case, if it's approved to go on there. My thought at this point in time then is, let's see if we could just make it on the next agenda. Put it on the next agenda. That way, it's done, it's on there.
So...
Things can happen then.
Point of order.
Point of order. Can I... Can we make an amendment to the amendment to table to the next meeting?
We can just add it to the next meeting. We can just... We can fail this vote right now, add it to the next meeting, and then vote on it in the next meeting. If that's okay. Tanya?
Can the mayor take it off the next meeting?
I would have no reason to take it off. Well, can the mayor take it off the next meeting? Highly unlikely.
So put it on.
No, because the reason I say that is that part of this process is, we don't want that seat sitting anymore, open anymore than you do. We don't. Because that means that half the voting power in your area is diminished. We don't... That doesn't do us any good either. That doesn't do us any good. So, that's not the intent at all. We don't have the voting power to put you there. That has to be done by somebody that can give you the oath. That's not us. So, we can set it to the next meeting. We can table it now, which means we have to take it off in the next meeting. You want to do it that way? Would that be better? Because we can approve it and then table it, and then the tabling is when you remove it.
So who would give the oath the next meeting? Three weeks?
It's... Well, I realize it's three weeks.
No. Don't... I understand that, but who would give the oath the next meeting?
We... That's who... We don't make that decision. I wish... I wish I could make that clear. We don't make that decision who gives the oath and who does not give the oath. They have to choose that. At that point... At that point, finding someone to give the oath, I don't know who's responsible for that. Normally, it's just a matter of you come in, you take the oath, you sit down. That's, that's what it's a matter of. We're in, we're in uncharted. Yes. You are very.
This should not be public discussion. It's not public discussion time right now.
Okay.
All right?
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna take the vote to put this on the agenda. Clerk will open online voting.
So we're gonna vote to put it on the agenda or not?
Yes, we're gonna, we have to amend, we're amending the agenda to allow you to put it on, correct?
Can I make an amendment to?
Yes, you may.
I will make an amendment to table this until the next meeting.
At second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
There was a lot of amendments.
We can't table something that's not on the agenda.
We have to put it on the agenda first to table it.
Okay.
I think, I mean, we just requested be on the next agenda and it's there, right? It's not, I don't believe it's a big, ill to put it on the next agenda. I honestly don't.
I, I do also think it would be important for the public to have notice of it. So if it's on the next agenda, then the public has notice of it.
But then what happens with the nominee process that ends on Friday? You guys could easily appoint someone before that opportunity, yeah?
We've, we've set up a timeline that we're going through and we intend to stick to that timeline. That means that there's, there's going to be an end to that. Because we, we want to make sure that seat gets filled. That's the goal, more than anything. The next thing would be to postpone that whole process until we can get a clarification to her question and the clarification to our question.
Can that motion be made?
What's that?
Can that motion be made to, to postpone the nomination process?
Yes. Absolutely, yeah. We have to, we have to get through where we are right now, though. Because we're, we're getting, like I said, new computer, new guy, we're in the weeds.
I'll just put it out there, and I'll discuss it when it comes to number 6D, right? On the agenda. Then I'll make clear direction from right here in this seat that to, to put that on the next agenda and then postpone the process on the next agenda. You know, or put something on the next agenda for that also. You know, I'll say what I'll do at that point in time. This is not the point in time to do that. You know, I can give direction to the city manager and it can make sure it's on the agenda at that point in time.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Are we correct? Okay. Yes, I would.
I move to approve the January 17th, 2023 city council agenda as amended to add Tanya's amendment to the agenda under unfinished business.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wells first, councilmember Weisenberg was second.
Thank you. Clerk will open online voting.
I thought the.
All you have to do is.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You, you approved for discussion?
Yes, I approved for discussion.
So Councilman Garner and then Councilman Weisenberg, first and second.
It has been corrected. Online voting is open.
Okay, this will be, this will be interesting. How do I do this? Oh, there it is.
If I did it right.
Clerk? Are we all in?
Yes. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with three yays and two nays. The three yays were Councilmember Wells, Councilmember Gardner, and Councilmember Seeloff. The nays were Councilmember Weisenberg and Vice Mayor Sanger.
So it'll be on the agenda?
So it is now on the agenda now.
Under unfinished business?
It should be unfinished business.
So I add it right now.
Where, where are you adding here so I can see it?
Under unfinished business.
It'll be.
Do we have to refresh or anything?
Number seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that, but I don't see. I did, but it still says none.
I haven't finished yet.
Okay. All right. When you're, when you're there, let me know.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's just like anything else. If we could get someone to make a copy for everybody of that. I mean, when something's handed to one individual, it needs to be handed to all.
Yeah, that's what I was.
So, yeah, if they can make copies and hand it out.
Want me to email it?
Yeah, see if someone can.
Okay, so it has been added. So you will need to hit refresh.
Yeah, refresh. Oh, it's not. Lynn, it's not on there yet.
It's not? It's online.
It should if you refresh it.
I did refresh.
It's online.
Yeah.
I'll refresh again.
Yeah.
It's on there.
I can see it now, yeah.
Councilmember Wells, did it come up?
Now we're good. Thank you.
So everybody's back up?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. So now that we've done that, we have to move back to approving of the agenda itself. Councilman Wells? We have to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the January 17th, 2023 city council agenda as.
Amended.
Amended.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open.
I didn't get voting.
It takes us.
It takes us. Okay, there you go.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with five yays.
Okay, moving on to the minutes and approval of the minutes. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of January 3rd, 2023 as presented.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. A motion passes with five yays.
Okay, moving on to citizens' participation. So I'm gonna take a poll real quick. You, through the approval of the agenda, did that cover what most of the discussion would be about? No, we have other things? Okay, so what I want you to do is just raise your hand real quick because I want to count hands real fast to see if I need to get really strict with the clock. Okay, so that's a no. No, that's a no. Okay, good. So we'll, we're gonna go into public comment. Resolution number 2C96 sets a time limit, so we're gonna not do the time limit thing so strict, but if there's like 100 people, I'd say, okay, we're gonna really have to be tight here. But that's not gonna be the case. So if you'll come up, introduce yourself, write your name so we can read it and so we can give it to the clerk when we're all done. Ms. Pam?
Honorable Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. Since things have been eliminated from the agenda the last couple of meetings for time allotment, I wanted to get up here and talk about some things for the community. The first thing is Happy New Year to everyone. We have some exciting things going on in the county, and one of them is the Carbon County Startup Challenge Pitch Night. I think I've been up here multiple times to let you know that we have an exciting new program through the University of Wyoming, the Business Council, SBDC. I can go on and on. I do have flyers for everybody in the audience, but I'd like to invite the public, Carbon County, excuse me, Carbon County to come this Thursday, January 19th at 5:00 PM and listen to our four finalists in the pitch challenge. We had 24 that submitted, and we are gonna give out some, at least $20,000 on seed money through different organizations across the state. And so that is 5:00 PM, January 19th, at the Parko Hotel, excuse me, Parko Theater. And we'd love to have a ton of audience people because you'll be able to do your choice awards through text. So you guys can pick your favorite. It's like Shark Tank. But I do have flyers who the four finalists are, and I can get those out to everybody. That's exciting. This is the first year we've ever done this with the help of Wyoming Innovation Partnerships, which is the community colleges, the University of Wyoming Business Council, Business Innovation of Carbon County that we have here in Rawlins, SBDC and Impact Carbon County, part of the Impact 307 Wyoming, University of Wyoming program. So that is this Thursday, the 19th. The next thing is I have invitations. We'd love to have everybody come to Sweet Soray, which is a new, just fun evening, exciting evening. You can bring your special someone or just want to come and have fun. Food, dancing, auction, wine and whiskey tasting. Friends will go towards the downtown lighting project. You can go to downtownrawlins.org. I know the council got an invitation in their mailbox last week. And then the last thing I just want to say is save the date for July 7th and 8th Summerfest. It's called Adventures at Summerfest 2023. And if you guys thought Summerfest 2022 was big, this is some cool adventures that we're having, and we're having vendors. We're gonna kind of have like an outdoor expo with hunting and fishing and different vendors there. And so it's gonna be very fun. So save the date for that. So thank you. So I will leave these two flyers in the back. Thank you for your time.
I hope you know where I am, but.
I, I do. This, that's more for the clerk.
I take good orders. Vice Mayor Sanger, Councilwoman Wells, Councilman Garner. No, yes, no, that's Garner, right there, okay. And Councilman Seeloff and Councilman Weisenberg. I want to thank you for providing me with an opportunity to address you, the legal governing body of the City of Rawlins. I would like to compliment you for the thoughtful discussion you had the other night about civility and raising the bar of how the city council conducts its business. I hope that it remains an important priority for all of you. I am not sure that I can add anything to that conversation, but during my life, I have served on many boards, elected, appointed, and on many committees. I have found that strictly enforcing rules of order ensures professional meetings. I think this is especially important when there is an abundance of controversy like there has been recently. Another tool that boards often use is a sergeant-at-arms to help keep order. That's just a suggestion. You may need it or you may not. While conducting your meetings, you address each other by your elected titles. This shows respect for each other on the council, and it sets the bar for civil behavior. It also sets the bar for how constituents should treat and address the council. Each of you, as you know, has a legal voice, only as a voting member of the city council. You're not required to like each other. You don't even have to like all of your constituents, and your constituents don't have to like you. But via the rules of order, you are all expected to be civil to each other while you're conducting council business. So when public comment is allowed, it is not unreasonable to expect citizens to be civil too. Those comments should be constructive and civil, even when you're being critical. With the advent of COVID, I understand that letters were allowed to be read in lieu of public comment. In my opinion, only those that are civil and constructive should be read aloud during the meetings. Personal attacks should never be allowed on any individual during board meetings, council meetings. And they shouldn't be read out loud either. Considering, consider that when you're responding to your citizens, that you may ask your city manager or your city attorney, if it's a pertinent matter, to address that, not necessarily in the meeting, but afterward with the constituents. And then when they ask you questions and they give you input, I think it deserves time to think about it. And so consider putting it on the next agenda as old business after you've given it that consideration. You know, streaming these meetings online and recording them, it's a great way to inform the public. But consider, your audience is going to be avidly watching everything you say and do while you're sitting there on that public stage. I don't envy you necessarily being in that position. Also, remember that you're on a live mic. You'll be very careful what you say back and forth while you're on that live mic. People easily can take offense. While I personally know that executive sessions are central at times and that there are protocols in place to ensure that they're legal, I would avoid having them unless they're absolutely necessary. And I knew, since I've served on these boards, I know there are times when they are necessary. But unfortunately, the constituents tend to get suspicious when you have them. You know, we have a wonderful little city, but I think that toxic incivility has been dividing it, and I really think we can do better. Again, thank each and every one of you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sanger and all the council for letting me speak. I know most of you, some of you for the good, some of you for the bad, it doesn't really matter. I just wanna say, Rawlins right now, whether you believe it or not, is in a crisis. And the crisis is you have a council that has no relationship with its citizens. The citizens don't trust this council, and the council, I don't know, trusts the citizens, or at least doesn't listen to them, at least from the opinion of many, and not all of you, but some of you. I think it is time that we, as the citizens, be heard. And this goes beyond just with the situation with Tanya and everything else. We, as citizens, just want to know that we are heard, want to know that our voices are listened to, and that we have an actual fight, or fight in this battle. I've just seen so much go on this council, so much in the previous with all the dirty boy stuff, and now with this election stuff. You know, it really is sad to see the state of our town and how everybody's bickering and fighting. It really is. We've, we've gotta be better. We've gotta be better. I mean, I go, and I sit on other boards and other things out of town, and I talk with other town leaders. I just had a meeting with a lot of Ward Two residents, and it's just what I told the Ward Two residents. Right now, Rawlins is the laughing stock because of how this council, and even its people, have been bickering with each other. Now, I'll admit, I've been part of that bickering. I'll admit it. I haven't been, you know, shy of opening and giving my critique to you guys, and for the, I'll try and do better. But you know, if we, the public, if you tell us we have to do better, I think the council has to do better too. We entrusted you to sit on this board, to sit on this council, to represent us, so we entrust you to lead us and do the right thing for us. And that's, look, all I got to say is I just think we really, really need to do better, because the state sees it, and everybody else sees it. And that's why nobody wants to come here all the time. We've gotta be better. We have to do better, and that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Most of my stuff that I had planned to say is on the agenda now, so I can't bring it up, but I would like to recognize that young gentleman, the youth of our community coming up here and being able to speak. That's a kudo to you and a kudo to him. One of the things outside of what I was gonna speak about was, I know this is only the second meeting with this board, this council, but where are we on moving forward in our search for a city manager? I can't find it anywhere online where there's even an opening, so. Thank you, City Council, Mayor, for allowing me to speak. As you all know, we got a ton of snow in our community, and I, all I wanna do is I wanna thank our city workers for all the hours and the time that they put in making it so we could get around our community. And I believe everybody in this room should give them a big hand for what they've done. That's all I got to say.
So I believe that I am a big part of the reason that the procedures for Ward Two became the procedures flat the other day, when you had your special meeting on last Wednesday. Because I had some real concerns about procedures that are happening on the city council, and I wanted to have them in writing, so I requested those procedures from First Myra, and I was directed to two emails that I should send out to ask for those policies or procedures. And I didn't receive any response back from either one of those people that I emailed about those, but both of those things were addressed at the meeting last Wednesday. Not in the way that I had questioned them necessarily, but they were brought up. First of all, I have a concern about the emergency meeting that was called on Monday before the last city council meeting. When we were let know five minutes beforehand that there was gonna be this emergency meeting on a day when there was no unnecessary travel going on, I think that that was a little bit inappropriate. It says that you need to give as much notice as you can to your constituents, and I think that that was a problem. You know, the communication, treating us with respect, that's what we're asking for. We're asking that we're treated with respect. The next day I came to the meeting, I had to have somebody give me a ride because the roads were still cruddy. So I wrangled somebody to give me a ride to come to the meeting, because I thought it was important for me to, to talk about something that I was very passionate about. And so we got here, and we were told that public comment was only for things that were not on the agenda, which, that to me was a new thing that just kind of showed up. All of a sudden, if it's on the agenda, then you couldn't be part of public comment. And I had watched several council meetings before, and that statement hadn't been made. And actually, there were two sets of people that were told that they couldn't address the dirty boys situation because it was on the agenda, and they would be given an opportunity later on to talk about that. So that was one of the reasons that I asked for a specific procedure on public comment. You know, what is it that, you know, when, what can you talk about? When can you talk about? The problem I really had on, at the last meeting, was when it came to voting on dirty boys, not one person was given the opportunity to talk, and several people had indicated that they wanted to talk about it, and it just went, okay, any comments between the board? We're voting, and you voted, and nobody was given their opportunity that they were promised at the beginning during the public comment. So you're working on those procedures, I think is absolutely vital, and it's something that you need to do in a quick manner so that everybody knows what the expectations are. When you had your special meeting on Wednesday, you talked about, the reason that you didn't want, and the other thing that I had asked for a policy was on was the reading the statements. Those were the two things. Those two were talked about in, in general at your meeting. And the reading of the statements, there was comments like, well, people are just bashing people, and we're not gonna read a statement where people, they just get there and they just wanna bash everybody, and they don't have any grounds for what they're saying. And I absolutely believe that we shouldn't be bashing each other. I shouldn't be bashing you. You shouldn't be bashing people that are here. We should be treating each other with civility and respect. And the respect is what I'm seeing is being lacking, and that I would love to, to see coming around. Respect from us sitting here in the audience, for us to be yelling out stuff at you as you're trying to do things is absolutely not respectful. Raising your hand, and if you're acknowledged, then you have every right to say what you, what you wanna say. But I've sat in these meetings, and somebody's talking, and somebody is yelling stuff out as they're talking, and that's, you know, that's, that's not respectful. And getting up here and just bashing people is not respectful, but it's coming both ways. You know, there, there's things said between you guys that's not respectful, and there's things said to people in the public that's not respectful, and we're your constituents. We're the ones that have voted you in, and we deserve to be treated with respect, but you also get that, need to get that same respect. So as you're working on these procedures, what I'm asking is that you think about how you would wanna be treated if you were at home with, with your kids, and you couldn't make it to the meeting, and you wanted to have a statement read. What, how would you wanna be treated? You know, would you want someone to read it? But it also should be a respectful thing that's, that, you know, that you're looking at. But take time, really think about those procedures, get input from people. Don't just make the decision yourself. Make sure that we're working as a group together and not working against each other. And that's what I feel like I've been seeing, you know, that we all should have input, but it should be in a respectful manner. And whether that's through an email, if I email you, I would love to get a response back from you. That hasn't always been the case. Some of you have responded to me, because I'm one of those that's gonna email. Whether you're my, my ward person or not, I would love to get a thank you or something back from you. And I think that we all deserve that from the people. The last thing I really want you to think about is the code of ethics that's been brought up over and over and over again. And I think that that's essential, along with the procedures. I think that that's something that you really need to work on so that you're portraying what you want your constituents to portray, and that you're treating each other respectfully, and that, you know, if you are demonstrating that as a teacher, I was expected to demonstrate what I wanted, you know, the respect that I wanted back. It's not any, you guys are public officials, and whether it's you making a comment on Facebook, or it's making a comment in a meeting, or it's making a comment as someone's walking out, you are in the limelight, and I want you to just think about it before you say stuff to people, and, you know, and think of yourself as the governor or the, the teacher that's trying to put on that good example. Okay? Thank you.
Looking for other hands to come jumping up. Anybody else?
So just wanted to give you a quick, um, butter, the letters that we emailed. I think everybody should have gotten an email prior from the committee, Civilians Committee for the Glen Edition. You didn't get an email?
Yes, I, I saw it.
Oh, okay. So I had to check, but here are some of the letters that we have, which I didn't get a chance to make a copy of, but I can.
Just hand them to Lynn, and they'll run copies for all of us so we can read them.
Okay, so we did get a chance to meet with the city manager intern, and I think we're moving in the right direction. There's a lot of good ideas about compost, how to sell it, how to make, um, make a profit from it, to help out. There's also been a lot of talk about what we can do in order to get the meters and get them installed, like get measurements, get maps. I've asked for maps and stuff. Kind of along the same lines as her, I don't get a response. No one, if my emails are getting there. Mr. Surry's been really great about responding back, but if we could just get like some acknowledgement that they got the email, that would be great, like email received or whatever. But I think we're gonna try to plan to meet again next month, and we're working as close as we can with the water, Mr. Dill, and. Yes, I'm so sorry. So we are working as close as we can with him to get that done. I noticed that we've been hopefully getting closer to meeting a reasonable rate and goal. We were proposing maybe a shut-off date, like where we shut off all the taps at the property lines, so we can see like how much we're losing for the leaks, just one day. I mean, we get it shut off all the time, so like if everybody just turned it off at the, um, property line, then we could see how much is actually lost. For, I mean, no, we can't do it right now because of the weather. They'll freeze and bust. But if it's not like freezing cold, then we could just leave it off and then see what, what the meter reads, and that would tell us how much we're losing. That would probably be the best way to do it. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up was, I know that in the past, the council of last year, and some of you have noticed, were on there, have voted for removal of fees for a short period of time to allow the improvement of property, to allow, you know, the, the owner of the property to get their property in better working order through either the abandoned buildings fund or through like the choir loft because it's non-residential. Also, the Eagles, I know they had a short sturm where their, their fees were removed. So there's been, you know, over the past, since two thousand eighteen, there was about twenty-something cases where they removed or suspended the recycling landfill fees. So there were a few people that wanted to ask that through a letter, so that's what your letter's about. And if, and I found all of that on the board docs. If you just go in there and you'll see the letters where they've, you know, requested or voted to get the fees, not removed, just suspended, because nobody down there has a problem paying it. They just don't wanna pay it while they're waiting on the meter, because they're trying to focus on getting meters and getting things ready for the meters. I think a lot of the properties down there is gonna need work before you, because the taps go, they cross across, across properties, so. And then we found out that there was an entire, what, section that wasn't even on the map. There were all these lots that weren't even on there, so it's gonna take a while to get everything updated. It's gonna take a long time to get everything fixed so that it's, um, not a mess down there. So I think with that being said, you know, two years is fair, and I noticed you guys already have it on your, your budget? I think it was fifty thousand, right? It was, it is literally on the budget. It says Glen Edition Water on there. So I think that's a really good way to get started, or to, you know, it's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four is what it's on there for, so hopefully, maybe suspending it for a while and give everybody a chance to get their stuff together, and that's it.
Okay, so that's all really good stuff, by the way. That's really good stuff. Anyone else?
Hey, Vice.
How are you?
How you doing, bud?
Good.
Council people. So I just have a couple of things to bring up. One, I think we need to start having a city hall meetings, like every three months. You guys need to start listening a little more what the problems are out there, what people, it gives them a chance to tell you what the problems are out there and help you solve the problems out there. So every three months, we should have a city hall meeting. We can have it at the Jeffrey Center, and that'll help all these people come and address you guys about the problems and help you with the problems. And it's a very good deal to do, so. And then, a couple of other things, like we need to start looking at what's not making the city money. Where, where are we blowing all our money? Where are we blowing all our money? What do we need to get rid of? And you need to start looking at all that, like the golf course. Need to sell that golf course. That's a business. We have no right to be running a business, not the city. Same way with the landfill. That need to be privately owned. That gets rid of your guys' all the mess that we've been having. So we need to start looking at that, selling a few things. Asphalt plant that we have, it's a, it's old, it's deep, it's falling apart. We spend more money on it than what we need. So we need to start looking at things like that so we can get rid of, rid of those. And lastly, we have fire hydrants out there buried in the snow. We have flags that go on those fire hydrants. We do have them, they need to be placed. So if we can get, get to whoever we need to talk to about getting those places, get those placed. Myself and my crew, we've gone out and dug out all the ones we could find. But I know there's more that are buried out there. That's all I got. Yep.
So first off, I'll apologize for my outbursts at the beginning of the meeting with regards to the Ward Two situation. I just know that myself and others believe that the person who was elected should actually be sworn in and it should not be appointed by the council. That's what elections are for. And that's what I believe the people at Ward Two are trying to get to. My time today, though, will be addressing the city council transparency. I came to the city council in December and brought up the issue of transparency and how what I've seen over the past few months, as far as city government transparency, has really gone downhill. There's been a big decrease in the amount of transparency that you all are presenting to the public. There are more and more executive sessions after, during or after city council meetings. The public doesn't know what decisions are being made during those executive sessions. The minutes are not available to the public to review, so we don't really have a clue what's being discussed. However, there are executive sessions before there are major votes with the city council, including the mayor, appointment of the mayor. So that just creates distrust between the city council and the public because the citizens are not privy to those discussions. It's a very arduous process to bring agenda items to the city council. We have a five-minute public comment session. Typically, we've been told that the council does not respond during those public comment sessions. So how can you have an active discussion with your constituents when all they have is five minutes to present their case? And yet it takes almost a mountain of evidence and signatures, petitions, to actually get on the agenda and have more than five minutes and have an interactive discussion with the council. That's not a very easy process for your constituents who have voted you into office. It gives the impression that the council really doesn't care what the public thinks or what they want. I have been active with the Glen Edition Committee that is not yet sanctioned by the city. However, we're working on that. I can say that Tom Sarvey, Cody Dill, Engineer Austin, Mike O'Brien have been very willing to participate with our Glen Edition Committee. However, getting responses from anybody on the city council has been kind of stressful and difficult for us. There's a lot of things that need to be changed at the Glen Edition and improved at the Glen Edition. However, it's all at the feet of the council, you know? We have to come up with a lot of information. We have to send notification within a certain timeframe to get on the agenda. It needs to be public, publicly posted in the newspaper. It makes it very difficult for us down at the Glen Edition to get the things done that we need to do. And I can't imagine what it must be like for the different wards in this city, the constituents who need improvements in those wards. And honestly, the whole city needs a lot of improvements. And so I just think it would be a lot easier, you know, to Kelly's point, to have a town hall meeting or a city hall meeting every three months so that the folks in this city can actually have a back and forth dialogue with the city council about some of these issues that are going on, instead of just a five-minute comment period where you all sit there and listen to us complain. So that's all I have to say today. As far as I know, in three years that I've lived here, there has been one town hall meeting that was arranged by Sean Medcalf over the water issue. And that was it. That was it. I thought it was a great meeting. A lot of people got their questions answered. They were able to speak to the different people who are involved in the water issue. But there are a lot of other issues here in this city that need to be addressed. And I believe that opening up some transparency and having some interactive dialogue with your own constituents would be very helpful. So that's all I have to say this time. Thank you.
You bet.
Super. Not that I don't know.
I know. Very famous nowadays. Not that I don't trust the council, but we have a notary public and I would like to say the oath of office.
Ms. Wendy, do we have a way of doing this?
I don't have an answer.
I'm going to be terrible about this.
No, you're, you're fine.
Councilman Weisenberg.
That was actually not in citizens' participation also. That's under unfinished business, so.
It's on, it's on this agenda.
It's on the agenda, on this agenda, under unfinished business.
So there would be an opportunity for me to take the oath before any tabling? Or?
Yeah, we're not tabling anything. We're just moving through the agenda at this point.
All right. I'll be back.
Whatever it would have been, we would have tabled already, but we didn't do that, so.
So unfinished business.
Unfinished business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's no other public participation, we'll be moving on to board appointments. We have quite a few of these this evening. First up is the presentation for Community Builder Award for January 2023. Mr. Jason.
Honorable Vice Mayor, City Council, thank you. Could I ask any members of the volunteer committee to please join me up here? Copper and Tara, if you'd like to join us as well, please. So the Community Builder Award, I thought I would start by giving a little bit of a background. This award is a monthly award the city presents to local individuals, businesses, and organizations for their volunteer service, sponsorship, promotion of programs and events, outstanding service in the interest of the city, and for other contributions significant to Rollins' quality of life. The volunteer committee would like to present the January 2023 Community Builder Award to Copper and Tara France for their outstanding service and contributions to our community. I'd like to say a few things. I had the honor of nominating these two wonderful people. And I'm just going to go through a few of the reasons why our committee voted to nominate them for this. Copper and Tara, they do so much for this wonderful community. They both agree, I had a great discussion with them a week or so ago. They both agree that just being involved is what it takes. They believe that volunteers make a community and if you want a better community, you just need to step up. They say they're most proud of identifying a need and working with Carbon County Ribbons of Hope, which our entire county has gotten behind. Ribbons of Hope helps people in every community in Carbon County by giving every bit of funding raised to people battling cancer. Last year alone, they raised over $44,000. Copper and Tara feel this is their home and community, and the best part is to get in and do the work. Make it a better place, build a sense of pride, make it a better community for members of all ages. The best way, they also added, the best way for a community to grow is to give. They added, once you become involved, you won't meet better people. That's what makes Rollins' home. They also feel there are so many people here in Rollins who do so much for our community. They do it quietly and they ask nothing in return. These are happy people, they say, and I agree with that. I asked them, what are some key ingredients for creating a vibrant, connected, and engaged community? They said flexibility as the needs and interests of the community do change, having new energy, new thoughts, and new ideas. City council, as part of this award, also gives the recipient $100 that they can donate in any local nonprofit of their choosing. And Copper and Tara would like to choose Carbon County Ribbons of Hope for that donation. Thank you, council, for that. That said, let's all, please join me in congratulating Copper and Tara.
I don't know if I can really say a whole lot more. I do appreciate the recognition, but really, that's not why we do it. We do it because it feels good, we enjoy it. And kind of like Jason said, it takes people stepping up, volunteering, and making an effort in a positive way to make change, whether it's, you know, discussing city council, stepping up to city council. A lot of the discussions here tonight revolve around people stepping up and making change. But it can be done in many different avenues. And there's so many great people in this community. And I think we need to embrace that. And I really appreciate this award. I think it's a positive thing that helps to recognize people in the community that are kind of those silent disciples that do things that just don't, don't get noticed. And it's not important that they're noticed, it's, but it does, it does feel good and it's nice to have that recognition. So thanks, thank you to the city of Rollins for the recognition.
Okay, we'll be moving on into our board appointments. So council, we'll be, we'll be nominating from here. And you'll run into some where you only have one for three spots and you'll run into some that have two or four for two spots and stuff like that. So when you're nominating, keep that in mind. Okay? First one is the Board of Adjustment appointments. Councilman Wells.
I move to appoint Shana Roberts to the Board of Adjustments for a term ending January 31st, 2026.
I'll take it.
I have a first and a second. Clerk will do up online vote. We're going to do each one separate.
Are we going to hear from candidates?
Sure, could make it long, but we'll try that. Ms. Shana? Can't hide in the corner, girl. Let's go. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I gotta be up here, you gotta be up here. Let's go. No, we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Thanks. So you want to be reappointed?
Yes.
To the Board of Adjustments?
Please.
Okay. Yes, is that the whole thing or do you want to give me a spiel?
I've enjoyed being my time on the Board of Adjustments and I would appreciate being reappointed to the Board.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
All righty, super. Thank you. All right. So we'll, we'll go ahead and vote. Clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. Motion passes with five yes.
Okay, moving on to the second one on the Board of Adjustments. Councilman Wells.
I move to appoint Anna, I always pronounce this wrong. Roth Lutner, to the Board of Adjustments for a term ending January 31st, 2026.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All right, you don't get to hide back there. Come on now. She's got to do it, I never got to do it.
It's Roth Lutner. Not my original name, I've downgraded. But I currently serve on the Board of, the Recreation Committee, Parks and Recreation, and I really enjoy that. I have the time to serve the city, so I would love this opportunity.
Thank you. We have the first and second. The vote is on the floor. Clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. Motion passes with five yes.
All right. Ms. Ann, you don't get to hide back there neither. Come on. All right. Councilman Wells.
I move to appoint Anne Terry Azell to the Board of Adjustments for a term ending January 31st, 2024.
I'll take it.
It's been moved in second. Tag, you are it.
Well, I decided that since there's been so much complaining and everything going on, that instead of complaining, I might as well get, jump in feet first and get involved.
That's a great attitude. Thank you. We have the motion on the floor. Clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. Motion passes with five yes.
All right, we're moving on to the next one. Is your arm getting tired?
I have a question.
Sure.
Can we have them, because this one is contested, can we have the applicants speak first?
Sure.
Thank you.
We can do that.
I was going to ask that. I sit on there too, so it's, you know.
All right. Under planning and zoning, we have two positions that are open and we have four people that are going to be running for these positions. So Ms. Genie, you're here? Yeah, I know you're here. I saw you. So why don't you come on up?
I'm Janine Holton. I've served for the last two years on the Planning Commission. And it's a nice challenge and I feel like I've almost got my feet on the ground, understanding what we're supposed to be doing. And I'd like to, I'd like to serve again if you saw shoes. Do you have any questions for me?
No. We're good. Thank you, Janie. Okay, Mr. Richard. I know, no hiding. Let's go. Let's go.
I've got 36 years' experience doing this in the city and the county, and I just enjoy living here and wanting to make it a better place. And I want to make sure that the guy with two nickels has got the same chance as the guy with two million. And it's my experience that, you know, I can answer what was done 10 years ago and why we did it, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on, Christina Lynn, are you in the building?
I have a lot of experience with business and personal properties and rentals and things that I manage. We have businesses out of town as well, and I'm now in Rollins almost all the time. So, I have the opportunity to serve and would love to do so.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for her?
Oh, yes, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I almost let you off the hook. All righty, thank you. Austin Thomas.
So, I applied for this position because I have a lot of great ideas, and I think that Rollins has a lot of opportunities for growth. I think they have a really strong community, and a lot of people that have ideas and want to get, expand, make it bigger, and make it a more...
Nothing, go ahead.
Sorry. And, you know, make it a more prosperous city, I think. I've been doing planning for turnarounds, I've been doing safety for turnarounds, I've traveled all over, I've seen a lot of cities. I do have quality control background. I studied at Spardon, and that's why I applied. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you. These are both for the same timeframe to January 31st, 2026. I need a motion on the first one. Councilman Weisenberg.
It's not even switching yet. We're on board docs to even make that.
Yeah, I just put, there's a line for each of them, so you just fill in their names.
Oh, it's... Yeah, so it's disconnected off the city as well. Yeah, we're just disconnecting.
Oh, you're internet.
You're internet.
Yeah, so I cannot see the terms. I could just...
January 31st, 2026.
That's an ending?
Yes, for both of them, yes.
For both of them, yes.
You would just like to nominate one person.
Yes. I would move to appoint Richard Wilson to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending January 31st, 2026.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Yay. Yay.
Online voting is open. And Weisenberg, Council Weisenberg, you said yay?
Yes, ma'am.
Does your connection is broke?
It just come back up. They connected.
Mine says that, but I'm still connected.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeas.
Okay. That's the first one. On the second one, Councilman Wells.
I move to appoint Janita Calton, who has served since February 2nd, 2021, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending January 31st, 2026.
I have a first. I have a second. Councilman Garner. Okay. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Um, yay.
Thank you.
Sorry. I thought I won.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeas. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Police Civil Service Commission.
I just want to speak if possible on that. I just want to say thank you to everyone that put their name in the hat. It's not easy to make those choices up here. There's a lot of experience on those boards. A lot of people come in that, I sit on that Planning and Zoning Board myself, and a lot of the individuals sitting on there come in, didn't have experience, and they've learned a lot and taken control and actually doing what they believe is best for the city. I want to say thank you again for putting your name in the hat, and don't be discouraged, and put your name in the hat for other boards that's available also.
Okay, thank you, Council. We're moving on to the Police Civil Service Commission Appointments. Councilman Wells.
I move to appoint Robert Travis Moore, who has served since February 7th, 2017, to the Police Civil Service Commission for a term ending January 31st, 2026.
Okay, I'm going to hold one second right there. We didn't go through both of them before the appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see the second one.
Yeah, we have a second name. So, Travis, I'll be abstaining from this vote. Travis is my brother-in-law. So, but Marlon Coggins, if you're in the room. Yeah. This is your opportunity to come up and do your gig.
I apologize, I'm sorry. I didn't see the second person on the bottom.
I don't have a spiel. I moved here from Aurora six years ago. The city has accepted me and my family, and we've had a great time here, and it's about time to get back.
Okay. Will you have any questions for him? No? Okay, great. Thank you. Now, I'll take the... Yeah, you can do it now.
I move to appoint Dr. Travis Moore to the Police Civil Service Commission for a term ending January 31st, 2026.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open.
You might have got kicked off.
I'm not coming up here either.
Yay.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with four yeas, and one abstained, and one abstained with vice mayor.
Thank you. We're moving on to the Rollins DDA Main Street. Where's my little dude? We have one, two, three total positions on this one. So, we'll have them come up, if they're here, we'll have them come up. I don't see Ms. Rita in the room, so she won't be coming up. Mike, is Mike working tonight? I'm going to guess he's working.
I'm trying to get on the internet.
And Heidi? No, Heidi? Okay. And then we have, those three were in-district applications, that's where they came from, the out-of-district applications. Shannon Hunter. Strike four. Linda Smith is also not in the room. Okay, and then Kristi Pellum, she withdrew her application. That's what I have on my thing, is that she was withdrawing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, great. Huh?
Who was it?
Kristi Pellum. It says withdrawing on her application. So, all right, so we have, there are different terms when they're expiring, I believe. What's the last one?
It's not working.
We don't have an expiration date.
January 31st.
I don't know.
There are two for January 31st.
2025.
2025, and there is one for January 31st, 2026.
2026.
That's what I had to do, yes. I had to connect on the phone.
All right, so we'll be doing the December...
Can we get just a 10-minute recess possibly at this point in time? Sorry on that, just to get everybody connected in their five minutes.
Sure, we're going to take five minutes. We're having trouble. We're breaking down here where we can't read and see what we're supposed to see. So, we'll take five minutes, so at 9:05, we'll start again. Thank you.
Sorry.
I hate this because it's really nice to have...
Do they have to stay in that order? They were in, because this one would be Rita. Correct?
She just vacated for a year term.
Okay. That's this one.
2026.
Six.
Yes.
Okay.
Rejoining me.
Okay, great.
For what? That's in-district, out-of-district?
There's that half of the...
That part doesn't matter? It's who?
So, do we need to say out-of-district if we nominate? Just say...
I appoint, or reappoint?
Yes, so this first motion is the one. That's the one she just finished.
Okay. So, that's the one she wants to...
Yes.
Okay.
But that's for sure.
Okay. That's on the term?
Is that this one?
Mm-hmm. Okay, if you want to make that.
Yeah, I would...
Okay, so we're all back in here? What, we're all good? Okay. So, we're moving on to the DDA, Rollins DDA Main Street Board Appointments. Thank you. We have three appointments, so we'll take them one at a time. Like I said, you can't meet any of them because they're not here. So, I'll take the first motion. Councilman Weisenberg.
I'd move to appoint Rita Sondergaard to the Rollins DDA Main Street Board for an in-district position for the term ending January 31st, 2026.
I have a first.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeas.
Okay, moving on to the next one. Councilman Wells.
I move to appoint Mike Helmet to the Rollins DDA Main Street Board for an in-district position for a term ending January 31st, 2025.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeas.
And the last one? Councilman Garner.
Move to appoint Heidi Larson to the Rollins DDA Main Street Board for, oh, actually, can I do that? It says it, because right here it says considered...
It's in-district. It doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter.
Okay. Yeah. Board for an out-of-district position for a term ending... Board for an out-of-district position for a term ending January 31st, 2025.
It's an in district. They, they can all be in district. If the people are physically in the district, it can be in district.
Okay.
So it's in district.
Okay. Do I need a minute?
No. Did I get it my second? I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with four yeas and one nay. The one nay was Councilmember Weisenberg.
Okay, moving on to Rochelle Ranch Golf Course Advisory Board Appointments. Councilman Wells?
I move to appoint Philip Candidate to the Rochelle Ranch Golf Course Advisory Board for a term ending January 31st, 2025.
I have a first and a second. Councilman Garner with a second. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Okay.
Voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeas.
All right, moving on to the last one. Okay. We're moving on to the Urban Deer Advisory Group Appointments. So we have a total of four. So if you're here, I'd like to hear from you, and then we'll go into the voting process. Justin Kerko?
Vice Mayor Council, I spent my whole life working with wildlife and would love to continue that work here in town.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none? Free to go.
I'm sorry, are you one of the local outfitters?
Yes.
So there may be an issue with conflict because if we are to recommend going out for outfitters, either his company is disqualified or he wouldn't be able to actually settle that.
Yes. Question at that point is, if that's the case, are you still wanting to be involved?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tag your it again.
You didn't even have to say a nay.
I'm just gonna say ditto to what I said before. I've been a hunter and just wanna, wanna get back.
Okay, great, thank you. Reece Irvine?
Vice Mayor Councilmembers, I put my name in the hat. I volunteered with that group the past three years, and I think the work that they do is important, and we need to continue to manage the deer herd in our town in some form or fashion.
Okay, thank you. And then Abby Perry?
She sent us an email.
Huh?
She sent us an email.
Okay, I wouldn't have that yet, so. Are we getting, we, we've read that, and we know what that is and everything, and I know who she is, so, okay.
Do you want to read?
Yeah, if you would, that would be great, thank you. Tag your it.
Yeah?
Sorry.
Abby says, hello, I just wanted to reach out briefly and say I'm sorry I won't be able to make it to the city council meeting. I've been, I've, I've been enjoying attending the Urban Deer Committee meetings over the last couple of years, providing feedback and helping make the educational brochure. I'm happy to address any questions or concerns regarding my application.
Okay, super. All right, so we'll start the appointments. They're both for January 1st through January 1st, 2025. So I need the first motion. Councilman Garner?
I move to appoint Justin Kerko to the Urban Deer Advisory Group for the term ending January 1st, 2025.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeas.
Okay, Councilman Weisenberg?
I'd move to appoint Reese Irvine to the Urban Deer Advisory Group for the term ending January 1st, 2025.
Is that good? I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five yeas.
Okay, we'll be moving on to reports and information, shooting range advisory board update. Mr. Jason, is that you? All right, super.
Honorable Vice Mayor and City Council, thank you. I'd like to do a brief introduction as we pull up a presentation that the Shooting Advisory Board put together for you all this evening. And then I'll also hand out a hard copy if you'd like to follow that way as well. So I'd, I'd like to introduce the members of our, of the Rollins Community Shooting Ranges Advisory Board that are here this evening, standing up here. In my experience, this is a very active board who has done so much to make improvements to the indoor shooting range as well as the outdoor shooting range in Rollins. This is truly a boots-on-the-ground board who have helped make the outdoor shooting range, for example, one of the best outdoor ranges, not only in Rollins but many states surrounding us. In fact, in July 2022, city council and members of the volunteer committee presented the Rollins Shooting Advisory Board with the Community Builder Award for all their contributions that improved the quality of life here in Rollins. Between all members, all board members here, they have more than 300 hours of shooting experience. Think about that one.
Years.
Sorry, did I say hours? Yeah, you're like, 300 hours, I got that beat. Roger caught me on that one. 300 hours of combined shooting experience.
Years.
Years. It's because I wrote it here. All right, 300 years, thank you very much. I should stop now and hand it over to these guys who would like to share a presentation with you with a little bit of what's going on with the shooting ranges. And Roger and?
Honorable Vice Mayor, thank you very much, and Council for letting us make this presentation to you and letting, letting you know what's going on with one of your advisory boards that you guys recommend, and we wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly support. I think Tanya here has a slide presentation, and I will make comments as, as the slides come up.
Thank you, Council. Like you said, you guys appointed me six months ago, and it's been different getting to know these guys, and as you can see, I brought some 21st century with slide shows. So, yeah, it was, we all worked, like, like I said, we all worked on this together. Everybody participated. We spent a couple of hours the other night working on it. Roger thought we needed to practice, but I told him, no, we just gotta go with it, right? So, like I said, we're the Rollins Community Shooting Range Advisory Board. We have nine members. And we're really, really active, I'm telling you what. These guys have gotten me out there shooting a lot this summer, and this fall, and I'm real excited about what we have in store for the future.
So much for 21st century technology. Okay, so the, the topics that we're gonna talk about this evening are the, the shooting range, the tournaments that we have lined up, the youth programs, the membership plans, and the master plan. And below that is listed all of the board members that we have, the nine members that we have on the Shooting Advisory Board, with over 300 years of experience in shooting.
We also have a new staff member, Steve Wilkins, so we also added him onto there. We're gonna be working with him with a lot of youth programs that's coming here.
That's staff.
What's that?
That's staff.
Staff, yes. Well, we're working on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, on the indoor shooting range, the thing of it is, is our Silver Bullet Tournament is coming up in February. It's, this will be our 31st year that it is being held at the Rollins Community Center, or Rollins Recreation Center, and it is attended from normally five different states in the surrounding area. So our, our, our equipment that we have here is well-received by the shooting community of them, and also the, the thing of it is, is we put on a lot of hours in, in getting this off the ground. And so I think it's something that the city of Rollins should be thankful that they support through the, bringing these members in, bringing these shooters in to support our restaurants and our motels and this kind of stuff, as well as the community, as well as the Rollins government themselves. Next.
Let me, oh, can you go back real quick? Sorry about that. Back to the other one. Yeah, sorry about that.
I am not the type person.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. Something that he didn't mention, but we have updated a lot in the indoor range. If you've not been out there, you know, we're working on the carpet, they're working on the new lanes, I think that, I'll come back to you. Okay, sorry about that. We've got some new cabinets, countertops replaced, the office is repainted, new fragment barriers replaced, and then the lighting right now is in progress. Projects in the works.
To replace the shooting range lane barriers, which we have 10 lanes out there, and so we can hire, we can hold 10 shooters at a time, and, and those are, have to be replaced for safety standards. The replacement of carpet in the office we're doing, the improvement of the floor, of the flooring in the range, and the repair and replacement of the lighting. The lighting is, is starting to get a little bit weak on the targets and stuff like that, so we want to replace that with LED stuff. Oh, there, she got it back.
Okay, outdoor.
Okay, the outdoor range has a, we've, we've got a number of, of range, of different ranges and, and shooting capacity out there and everything like that. Our 300-yard range, which includes a covered firing line with permanent shooting benches that are available to the public. There are 10 positions out there. A thousand-yard range for you guys that really like to shoot along ways. Pistol ranges, we've got a full archery set up out there with targets, 3D targets out there, antelope, deer, elk, coyotes. I think there's a turkey out there even. And then the skeet and the sporting clay shooting that we can do. And individuals and, and families are actively present every day at the ranges, and the membership is growing every month, and we will have membership numbers here in a little bit. Future improvements are identified in our outdoor range master plan, and we're looking at a 3D walking archery range with a grant pending and safety-related projects that we have. One of the main ones is that shooters can sit on, can stand on the 300-yard firing line, and they can see somebody downrange adjusting the targets on the 1,000-yard range, and we don't want that.
The tournament. Roger talked about the tournament, how we're gonna be having our Silver Bullet coming up pretty soon, and how that does bring revenue to our community. That is a very important thing.
So, and one of the thing of it is, is next, or this coming summer at the outdoor range, we've got 19 tournaments lined up that are gonna bring shooters from all over the Rocky Mountain area and into, into the town of Rollins. That's why your shooting range is, is recognized as one of the best in the Rocky Mountain area. It really is.
Okay, so we have some youth programs. That's, that's why I did, you know, volunteer to be on this council. I work for the middle school, and I work with a lot of the youth in the community. So we have actually a junior rifle league, and these two guys right here, they help with that. How many did you guys have this year? Sign up for the rifle league?
There's three classes with eight people signed, agents signed up.
So in that, they teach the kids about safety, marksmanship, you know, it's like a fun controlled environment because they need to know how to handle those guns. That's, that's a lot of things wrong with the youth, you know, they get a bad rep not being able to, you know, everybody always says, you know, they don't know what they're doing. So that's what our job is, we want to educate them on how to handle a rifle, or, you know, how to, you know, safety and things like that. So we're hoping, you know, to touch every youth in the community to get that going and educate them on that. So they've been teaching for 30 years, you said?
Years, my 30th year, yes.
It says 30th year, it was young, yeah. So we've got some 4H programs. We're developing more programming. We're gonna be doing a hunter safety here pretty soon. We've got some classes open right now to get signed up for, so.
In the development of additional programming, we're working with the school district, and, and this is one of the things that was brought up that a few of us didn't realize, is that there are some high school shooting teams for skeet and trap. And, and the school district in, school district number one here in Rollins is interested in developing this and, and making a team that would travel to Sheridan, Cody, Cheyenne, and there's one other town, I can't remember what it is, that, that their high schools have shooting programs in them. And so this is another thing that we're looking at.
Are those in the state of Wyoming? The other teams, they're all here?
Oh, yeah.
Right on.
Yep. I didn't even know they had that, Steve, but anyways, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's okay, Santa, it's all right.
We're in the process right now of contacting them, finding out what we should to get that developed and everything, you know, to get that started.
We will tentatively provide the shotguns for them, you know, and, and instruction, full instruction on how to shoot skeet and trap and, and all of this kind of stuff, and I think it'll be really cool.
Great. That's great.
Next one for membership. So this is the numbers. Everybody likes to see these graphs, right? So if you look at the numbers to the left, we have 2019 to 2022. Okay, if you see, it starts at 1:03 in 19, it went down to 75, went a little bit up to 84, and then back up to 107, okay? As you, as you can see, the decline is during COVID years. So, you know, that was when we all were getting out. But, you know, like I said, you can see it's, it's increasing. We're working on programs to further increase the membership. I know I've been putting a lot of stuff on social media. We didn't do that a lot before, so I'm trying to do more of that. And so it gets out there and we get more people involved from the community, because I know a lot of times people are always saying, well, they didn't know. So we're trying to advertise more and also show our numbers and everything like that. We just wanted you guys to see the graphs.
Okay, our master plan was, was created in 2006 with the help of a, a firm from Florida that helped us get our master plan going, did the reading of the topography of the range out there so that we could plan where we're gonna have different ranges and all. where we're gonna have different ranges and all of this kind of stuff. And uh, with the help of the city and with the help of grants, why all of this has come to fruition. The thing of it is, is of course, 2006 was a long time ago. And um, and so it's time to update the range with further safety standards and, and range improvements. We have to finalize the master plan and that will be brought before uh, the city council for adoption. And uh, the adopted, or the updated master plan will be essential to receiving grants. And this is how a lot of the shooting advisory board operates. We operate on a lot of grants. I realize the city puts some money into it and everything like that. We would like to, pardon me, twist your arms a little more for some funding. But uh, a lot of, a lot of the stuff that we do out there is done with grants. And the vast majority of it is through the Friends of the NRA.
Which by the way, that is actually, we've rechartered that. We'll be having a banquet March 11th. So, you know, always looks good at NRA when we have a Friends of the NRA in the community, so we started that back up.
We are going to be doing, uh, to, to end this, we're going to be doing further advertising on the outskirts of Rollins um, so that people can come in and, and if they've got an afternoon or something that, that they'd like to come shoot in the evening or something during the winter hours, or, or go out there and shoot while they're still light at the outdoor range where we're gonna have uh, hopefully get some uh, advertising up on the outskirts of town. And with that, we thank you very much for allowing us to present this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to city manager and staff reports. Mr. Tom.
Honorable Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. I, uh, we have two staff reports tonight for staff that would like to report. First, our recreation director, Jason Seahan, would like to give a staff update.
Honorable Vice Mayor and Council, I will be brief, uh, but thank you. Um, I wanted to give you an update. This Friday will be the first local business sponsored roller skating event um, sponsored by Bank of Commerce here in town. Um, so this Friday, January 20th, from 7 to 9, if you go to Bank of Commerce anytime this week during their regular business hours, you can pick up free tickets uh, to skate on Friday evening. If you're unable to make it to the Bank of Commerce to get your free tickets, we do have a reduced admission at the door Friday evening, uh, $3 to get everybody in the door. Uh, but I wanted to thank Bank of Commerce for sponsoring this night and give an opportunity for those in our community that want to come out and try out roller skating for free. So this Friday, look forward to seeing everybody out there. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have our, uh, city engineer, Austin Gilbert. He's got an update on our uh, street projects and those that we're looking at.
Okay. I know, I saw him. Where'd he go? There he is.
May I approach?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to bring a few items to your attention today. So, uh, one particular item that I'd like to go over tonight, if this is the appropriate time, is to discuss the city streets. So with that, I wanted to let you know that we have a six penny fund that we're using to pay for 12 different projects at the city of Rollins. And it identified about $12 million. Actually, it's less than 12 projects, the total amount is about $12 million, I do apologize. So, we had kind of a general idea of how much each project was going to cost when it hit the ballot. But, oh, I'm finding, and what I'm looking at, that we can't cover the costs for those projects with what's budgeted in the six penny. So, I have a couple of different ideas. So I know that we had originally talked, and I may have spoken about this prior, but I think that this is important to look at now. That with Edinburgh Drive, or Ed- uh, Edinburgh, uh, it has a couple of different street names, okay? One of them is on private property. And the original task order was to design a road through private property. And we had spoken about this. And I have a proposal from WWC, the engineering firm that had originally done the design for that particular stretch of road. And we are looking at, if we, if we can break the project down and not do the improvement on the private property uh, for a, a total of about $55,000, we can move forward with completing the design in the next few months and get this advertised and out. I feel that we do have the budget to cover, but there are a variety of competing needs at the city. There's a limited budget for six penny. And so it's gonna take some additional discussion, maybe at a later time. But we can at least spend this $54,000, we have enough money in the budget to cover for that. I believe that this is a critical infrastructure improvement for the city of Rollins. I believe we should move forward with this task order addition for the $55,000. And what it does is includes uh, essentially a process to help us through uh, utility easement through the private, private property. And then also helps us complete a couple of different design improvements as well that might have been missed prior, uh, during the original design. Uh, that was kind of stopped towards January of last year. So, uh, with that, uh, please.
Which area is the private property located?
On the south.
On the south.
It's.
So in front of the, the apartments area?
It's directly south of the apartments and, which then connects to, to Murray.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah.
Through the trailer court.
Exactly, yes. And that's the, that's Essentia Properties, or Saddleback Properties now, I believe.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. So, uh, I don't know if I need to, with the direction of the city attorney, come back with a proposal for a task order for council to, to sign? Maybe at the next meeting or something to that effect? Uh, but I wanted to bring this to your attention, that this is available for us to move forward immediately uh, once we have a signed task order. Do you have any questions about that?
Councilman Weisberg.
So are you saying we need to redesign again? I thought the engineering and everything was done on that project, even though it halted in January. Why couldn't we not go back to the, that original even? I mean, you're, you're, you would know what would need to be added yourself, I believe, you know, and possibly save this money.
Yeah, uh, so effectively what it does is it creates a solid set of plans that a contractor can bid. And it's a complete set of plans, whereas right now what we have is a full improvement through the private property where we have no easements. So it doesn't have updated survey, uh, survey information. It doesn't have any uh, uh, agreements or anything like that associated with that, that work going through the private property. And so if we'd have the survey work done, uh, where we'd go and have an easement approved with Saddleback, it'll really help us out. So we, we have to go through Saddleback for our utilities based on the current design. So that would be uh, stormwater sewer. Uh, and so effectively having that, that right of way through the Saddleback property will allow us to get, to keep the majority of the design that we have already done. But then simply in our redesign effort, we would have a trim back of all the things that you'd see on the surface. So your asphalt quantities would be cut off. There'd be no, no hot mix asphalt on the private property. There would be no curb and gutter on the private property. But we would return the property back to its current condition uh, where we do no harm, so to speak, uh, through the, the easement, but what simultaneously solve a lot of the drainage issues that we have historically seen on Edinburgh.
So that allows us to go underneath their street with plumbing that is necessary for the drain off? Cause we don't have any drains in that entire area out there.
It would really be advisable to move forward with an easement, yes.
Any other questions?
We don't have an easement to go across there right now?
I don't have an answer for you at this time.
Oh, cause it should be an easement for, or if our water and sewers go across there.
I think that it's worth a discussion.
Yeah, and uh, the stormwater runs on ground. There ain't no storm sewers through, through there if I remember.
Okay.
No, it's all natural.
Just.
Anyway, I would, I would have figured we'd had to have an easement to put it through their gateway.
I think that would be a good thing to have.
Oh, so if we, if all were, basically that's all you're gonna change, is so we get easement, so we go through there?
Uh, no, what it does is it changes all the tabulations and the plan sheets for contractors that bid against. So what, effectively what this will do, and I, I think this will kind of help, if I can provide some numbers for you. My hope is to bring the current engineer's cost estimate from four and a half million dollars down to two and a half million dollars or less by trimming back the surface improvements through private property, which you should never do anyway as a public entity. So in doing that, I feel like we can uh, solve the city's problems while simultaneously creating an avenue for the future for our utilities and also that drainage that needs to happen for that spring that's on that street.
So the original deal was figuring pavement, new pavement, curb and gutter and everything through all of their property too?
Correct. Yeah, they were going to uh, allow us to pave on their, their property, so.
You didn't allow me that.
Yeah.
You can pave my.
You can pave my driveway.
Yeah.
I think it'd be worth a discussion with them if they're, if they're tearing stuff up. I mean, not for the city to pay that, but them to, if they want that done at the, the cost that's given and associated with that, if, if they want to pave at that cost. Because if I'm not mistaken, that was kind of done on the Davis Street projects and stuff like that on the south side, when they did the curb and gutter over there with sidewalks. I believe what they did is allowed uh, residents to uh, pour their, have their sidewalks poured at that cost of what the, the concrete and the labor would have been at that point in time. So I think it would be worth a discussion with the company themselves to say yes or no on their end if they want to uh, pay for their own asphalting and stuff like that with their money, not city money, or taxpayers' money, but with their money at the rate we would get that at. Yes.
You could certainly see an improvement in the economy of scale uh, in that application. And everybody might come out ahead in that.
I would, I would think that'd be a good discussion to have with them.
Okay, I think I can look into that.
Tom, I do have a question though. Um, do we not need a bid request then? Because we're over 35,000 bucks to do this?
We're over 35, we would.
So we will need to be, we will have to go out to bid?
For professional services, that's not the case in the state of Wyoming.
Okay. I think that that's the city's ordinance.
Oh, I see.
That is not the state's ordinance.
Yeah, I think you're correct that it would be city.
That we would still have to, we would still have to go to bid on that.
I believe so.
So let's check into that. Let's just check into that and see if that's the case. Um, if we can, you know, do something other than that, it would be news to me, but we can still check. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and then, so with that, that is for the Edinburgh improvement. Uh, then the second item uh, that I'd like to bring to your attention is the Davis Street Extension. Uh, currently we have WLC, the survey company out, engineering and survey, out doing the work where they are gathering the data for the improvement for the connection. They're essentially going out with the survey equipment and pulling data for us and creating a, a survey that we can use to build on for the extension. And effectively, uh, right now, I would expect he'll be complete with that uh, once, once the ground is clear enough for him to get enough shots. There are quite a few drifts out there and whatnot, so it may take some time before that happens. I'm not sure, I'll have to go back and speak with him on the progresses on that. But we are moving forward. Uh, with that, I had originally intended on doing the design in-house for that. And uh, I'm having some troubles with AutoCAD right now in terms of licensing uh, and purchasing a license as well. So uh, I need to look into that with Tom on the Davis Street Extensions. But with that, that is effectively what I had to present to you on streets. Is there any further discussion on streets?
Nope.
Okay. Is there anything else that you'd like to discuss?
No, I think that's good, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, um, staff Tuesday had a productive meeting with the owners of the Glenn Edition, with the committee that came in. And for the new council people, the, uh, the water rate study was completed a few months ago. And off of that, we calculated a new rate for the Glenn Edition. And with the water, the landfill and the recycling, the, the resolution for the, the monthly rate was set at $75. And since then, we have done some research and we found where there's a secondary meter on that line that pulls water that is, is metered. And we've recognized some leaks that were fixed. And so we credited back amounts on those leaks. And um, I, I was gonna have the, the proposed amended resolution tonight, but we had a meeting Tuesday and I researched several of the items that were brought forth. And from the research that I did, I, I think for, for now, without further knowledge of the leaks that are there, I will, I will bring a recommendation to the council at the next meeting to reduce that amount from 75 to 65. And I can share that information again with the, the council. But I will bring that next week, and that's after the research that we had Tuesday, I wanted to hear the information before I made a recommendation to see if there were further items that might, you know, reduce that. So, uh, next, next council meeting, you can expect that. Budget season is officially underway. Just have to announce that. Tomorrow at our leadership meeting, I will pass out budget work papers. It has salary budgets, capital, as well as the operational needs of each group. And what we will do is um, I will meet with each group and we will fill in those, those numbers that we have. And then, uh, and then a few weeks down the road, I will present that information preliminary to the council as to where we stand. And we want to make sure from the council viewpoint that everything is included in that budget that is expected from the council before we get, you know, too far down into the process. So, anyway, with that, that's underway. The rest of the things that I would report on tonight are later on, on the agenda. And that includes an ARPA grant update. That includes project management on the waterline. And that also includes a review of our rates and fees that we charge. And those will be later in the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, uh, city attorney reports.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilman. Um, I have been contacted by, I forgot her first name, but the lady from Twisted Delusions about the tattoo and piercing ordinance. Yes, Candace, thank you. Um, I talked to her this week and assured her that we are still working on that. Um, and because she hadn't heard anything, um, I just updated her. We do still have that in the hopper and it's still being worked on. Um, and there's also going to be a couple of other ordinances coming before. And there's also going to be a couple of other ordinances coming before the council here in the next few meetings. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Moving on, direction from city council to city manager and city attorney, Councilman Wells.
Tom, I was just curious about the fire hydrant flags that the gentleman mentioned earlier. Do you, do you know anything about that?
I do not, but I will, I will find out and report back.
Thank you.
Councilman Garner?
After the public comment and just from what I'm seeing around town, could we look at maybe with, see what you guys think about doing quarterly town hall meetings? Set up maybe an hour or two, one, you know, every quarter to do something like that? And just see if we can do, if we could squeeze it in the schedule? I don't know. What do you guys think?
It's a discussion to be had, that's for sure. Councilman Weisenberg?
I would agree to that too, but I'd like it to be ward specific if that's the case, because there's, I don't, you see what I said?
Well, for this one, I was just, I was thinking more for the city side of it, so they can talk to them, just kind of hear from the people, and then we could do, we could do ward specific as well for ourselves if we wanted to do that. If, if, what do you think of that? Just something that the city could do for them.
Councilman Wells?
Maybe that's like a workshop discussion. Then we could break it down, you know, and...
So how best to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Super. We can go through that, sure. Okay. So do we have anything else for him? Councilman Weisenberg?
Um, yeah, just a few things, like I had said earlier, whatever, depending on what happens here in a little bit. If there's oath of office given, then it's null and void. But if it's not, or whatever, then please put that on the agenda for next meeting. And if that's also not on there, a postponement or of the applications for vacancy, that's the first thing. It was discussed from the gal representing the Glen Edition about a suspension of fees from the past. I believe what that is, is a waiver of fees that has been given. It's been given to a lot of nonprofits and stuff like that. It wasn't, it's never, was never given in my, in my time sitting up here, it was never given to just keep off of your bill. It wasn't a deleting of landfill fees and recycling fees and stuff like that off the bill. What it was is a gate fee at the landfill for lowering, some lower income or nonprofit stuff like that with those fees. And I can't remember, I honestly think we've only, in my time, I think I've seen three come through here in two years, to be honest with you all. So the other thing is, is we used to have a shared position with the GIS through the county. That position went away. I think I'd like to see some kind of information on what was gathered, because a lot of the fire hydrants and stuff like that should have been mapped out in the GIS system and maybe a bunch of the taps that are missing or mixed up, or however you want to say that. I think we might be able to locate a lot of that stuff through the information that was gathered through the GIS system, if you could check on that also, Tom. Sorry, keep going, right? The restaurant at the Rochelle Ranch Golf Course. I'd like to know when the bid is going to go out, or anything is going to go out to people interested in becoming or, you know, coming into the restaurant or find out what is the scenario or situation there. I'd like an update. We're running into middle January already, and it takes a while to get that going, and the sooner the better. Along that lines too, I'd like to see a, maybe see if you could find some kind of professional cleaning service that could handle that out there and get that professionally cleaned. I was actually talked to and discussed with that, if possible. Last thing is the fishing pond. To learn about the fishing pond, the way I learned about it, right? And it's no fault of your own, yours, I promise that. There's no discussion through us of the county taking that back because of the property lien, because of not having it done. You learn about that through a radio, right? And that's not right, okay? Yeah, you might not have even known, right? So, so they took that back. I don't know where the break happened between the council and the city manager or the council or the county attorney, or county commissioners and the city manager, or however the breakup happened, but we need to look into that. I mean, if state's on there, they'd be willing to deed that back over if the project is to be sought through. But that project is a big project that, I get it's a big undertaking for the city to take on and do, but it's a needed project, right? It wasn't just about a fishing pond. It was about stormwater collection also. And it's, I believe it's DEQ that requires us at a population of ten thousand people. It don't matter if it's a growth of ten thousand people from an influx of a, of turnarounds going on at the refinery, but we need to be able to have that there, you know, in case that happens. So I think we need to get back into looking on that project. I know I'd mentioned the water line, you know, for the cemetery, raw water line to the cemetery. And that was one reason I had kind of mentioned maybe going down the Daly Street, right? Is due to that fact, right? Because it would always supply some kind of water there, even if we didn't have a bunch of runoff. So, but if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it and just get back to us on that. That's everything.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just have one more thing. Wendy, do we have an update? Or do you have an update on an ordinance change for the code of ethics that I requested?
I do not.
No, okay. Can we, can we keep looking at that and see what we can come up with?
Would it be okay if we set up an appointment to discuss it?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
I'll be with you tomorrow on that.
Okay. Anyone else? We're good? Okay, we're going to be moving on into unfinished business, and this is Tanya to take the oath for Ward Two. I need the, you're my notary? Ju, the notary? Okay, do we have the paperwork, the relevant paperwork?
No, we'll need his name and notary certificate to be able to draft that, but we can provide the oblige, and that can be done immediately. And then we can prepare the paperwork afterwards if that's acceptable.
I'm going to ask the council that question. Is that acceptable?
As far as?
Providing us with his paperwork. Is it his paperwork afterwards, or?
The signing of the after oath.
The signing of the oath, okay.
Right, but we won't be able to sign that. It'll have to be put on city letterhead. So we can, immediately after the meeting, we can have that drafted, and we all can sign it right on the spot? If that's okay with the council.
I just have one question. Once this is complete, will she be able to start with new business?
That's what we always start with.
Will she be able to?
She'll be able to start, yes. Everybody starts with new business. It doesn't matter if there's something before that, you can't decide any of that, because it was in existence before she sat.
Right, no, I mean, yeah, I just wanted to verify she can take the seat next.
Yeah, she can sit down, and yes, that can occur from that point on, yeah. It always happens in new business.
I just want to see legal copies taken of everything that's needed, or whatever, paperwork and stuff.
Okay, just take it slow.
I'm going to.
Hold on. Hold on one sec.
I just, you have legal cop, or copies of the legal paperwork and everything?
That's what we will finish up. Right after the meeting, we will draft so that everybody can sign it. And it will be, as soon as she takes the oath, it's official. The paperwork has to be witnessed and sealed by the city.
And you're going to do that immediately after we're done here?
Immediately afterwards, yes.
So do you, we need to take a break while you go do that?
Actually, if we take a break now, I can have it ready, and it can be all signed right now.
You want to do that? Okay, how long do you need?
Maybe three minutes.
Okay, I'm going to give you five. It's almost 10 o'clock, so we'll give it until five after 10.
That gives you practice. Did you need glasses?
Oh, yeah.
You bet.
There they are. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you return to your seats so we can get finished with this. Where's Scott go?
Yeah, thank you.
Now you lost him. Good.
Can we just make the announcement? Councilman Garner, you're late.
Yeah, come on, Garner.
If I could have you all return to your seats so that we can conclude the meeting?
Conclude?
I wish.
Yeah, Wildlife and Natural Resources. That's what it was. Okay. Okay, Scott, you ready?
I'm ready. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Repeat after me. I, Tanya Lumen, have been duly elected.
I, Tanya Lumen, have been duly elected.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear, confirm. Or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And I have not knowingly.
That I have not knowingly.
Violated any law related.
Violated any law related.
To my election or appointment.
To my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I can breathe now. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we'll be moving on to new business. You'll be yea and a nan. Because you don't have a computer, so you'll be yea and a nan.
Okay.
Okay?
Yea and a nan.
Yea and a nan. All right. We'll be moving on. Approval of payroll. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the December 18th, 2022 through December 31st, 2022 payroll register for
I have a first, second. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? If no discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
Thank you. Moving on to accounts payable. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of December 2nd, 2022 to January 10th, 2023 in the amount of $895,829.63.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, clerk will open online voting.
Yes.
Can you hold on one second? I just... Hold on one second.
Okay.
I just have to add things. Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
Okay, moving on. Approval of renewing the City Rowland's Lodge 609. I'll just let you read the whole entire thing so that I don't have to read it twice. Okay. Councilman Garner?
I make a motion to approve the City of Rowland's Lodge Number 609, Benelivet and Protective Order of Els, BPOE, Number 609 Bingo, Hold Tabs Gaming License Application, until December 31st, 2023.
Second. I have a first and a second. That was Bruce. Councilman Seeloff, I'm sorry. This will take a bit. Yeah, like I said, fell off the bike, still hurts. Open online voting. You have already done that, so...
Online voting is open.
Thank you.
Approved.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
Thank you. Moving on to a resolution authorizing updating Rowland's Community Shooting Range Advisory Board bylaws to add two alternate board members. Wendy, is this you or? Okay, Jason, it's you. I just was gonna check to see, because it's got bylaws. I just thought I'd check.
We need a motion and...
Yeah, hold on a second. He's gonna tell us what it is first so we can make that decision.
Honorable Vice Mayor and Counsel, yes, just, I guess, to start, the bylaws have been reviewed and okayed by Wendy. So this, these bylaws update were... This is a recommendation of the Shooting Range Advisory Board. They voted unanimously in June 2022 to recommend to the City Council to update the bylaws to add two alternate members to the board. The idea is there's a first alternate and a second alternate. So if you envision there's... It's currently a nine-member board. So if only eight members show up to a meeting, then the first alternate member becomes a voting member of that meeting. The second alternate member would become a non-voting member of that meeting. And so the shooting board, we don't have so much of an issue with obtaining a quorum at the meetings as we do some of our other boards, but it does help that happen. So I would be confident that we'd probably not have any meetings where we don't have a quorum because those two alternate members become voting members in the absence of any other regular member. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I do have one. So there, how many's on the board?
Nine.
So if they have five, they have a quorum?
Correct.
So they need... Do they have moments where they don't have five?
No, I was gonna say, the Shooting Advisory Board actually is not one of those boards who has an issue getting a quorum. They are pretty good about it. Because you're right, whether it's eight or nine members, you still need five for a quorum.
Right, and they're covering that five, so we're making this change to adjust for the five? That's my question, I guess.
That's one way to look at it, yes. I mean, it's...
So if you only had four, then one would make five and you'd have a quorum and you could do a vote?
Correct.
Okay.
Or you would also have an additional member as a voting member if you had one of the nine not show up, so you'd...
So they want to have a complete board every time?
If that's...
Boy, they're spoiled. Just checking.
I was gonna say, I've been on the Shooting Advisory Board approximately a year and a half now.
Mm-hmm.
And in that short amount of time, I've had at least twice that we have not had a quorum.
Okay.
To be able to conduct any business.
Okay, great. Yeah. That's a great purpose.
Are there other boards that have alternate members?
There are not currently. I was hoping to get input from Counsel. If this is something that Counsel is interested in moving forward with, I would probably bring back a proposed bylaw update for the Golf Advisory Board as well as the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Okay. Super.
I think the thing with this board that presented itself is they had several applicants last time, that there was appointments to this board. Well-qualified applicants, individuals that served on that board and for years that was not reappointed to that board. It was just kind of a, in a way, a sad situation that happened with the amount of applicants that come in. So I think if this is to be done, that that might be... They might come back to the table, apply for that, those boards, even if they're alternates. They have a lot of knowledge and input that would help out, I think, with the shooting range.
Okay. Thank you. That's all you have, Jason?
Unless you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Point of order, for us to discuss, shouldn't we have a motion on the table?
We're gonna do that. We're gonna go through that process right now. I just wanted to know exactly, because if this gets confusing... Yeah, I'm confusing to me going, I don't know why you would need them if you don't ever, if you always have a quorum. So, didn't make any sense. But now we know they don't. All right, so I need a motion authorizing the update of this resolution. Councilman Weisenberg?
I'd move to approve resolution authorizing updating Rowland's Community Shooting Range's Advisory Board bylaws to add two alternative, or alternate, board members.
Second. I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
Thank you. Moving on. Now, do you... Hold on one sec. Do you want to cover both of these at the same time? Is that what you want to do? So we're gonna cover both E and F at the same time because they are kind of interconnected in how they work. Okay? So before we do that, I need a motion. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve resolution for authorizing submission of an American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA grant, application for local governments to be submitted for Phase Two of the Water Infrastructure Delivery System to Wyoming State and Investment Board slip in the amount of $1,872,577.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Garner?
I just have a quick question for all three of you, I guess. This does not include... This isn't gonna touch on the SCADA system, right? This money's not gonna go towards that?
No.
I just wanted to double-check. I have to excuse myself for that.
Sure. I would ask that the Vice Mayor allow me to discuss both of those.
Yes.
Because both resolutions impact each other, and what I have to say about them may affect your decision on the first one as well as the second one.
Okay, yes.
We need to make the motion.
So we need to make the motion for you to go through that discussion. So we'll put... We already have the motion on the floor, but if you want to tie them together so we understand that, that they are in fact tied.
Yes.
Because we're gonna vote on them separately.
Correct.
Okay. I don't know exactly how we would go through that process because they are separate items.
Right, and for the grant, we need two separate resolutions. One, authorizing us to approve the submission of it as an entity of the city, and, I'm sorry, as the city, as the entity. And the second one for the match funding to come out of the General Fund and Impact Fund, Assistance Fund. So what this is, is, as you all know, we had an ARPA grant that was denied in September due to us having a lack of point funding. So I wanted to go through the point funding with you all so we can make an educated decision on whether or not to move forward with this grant. They have allocated another $50 million to water fund projects that we are eligible to apply for. And I suggest that we make some modifications to the former grant, and this particular grant would allow us, the scope of work would be for the spring boxes and junction boxes in the Sage Creek Basin, which would be our Phase Two, Step B of the process. So it would pay for not only purchasing those, but installing those. And that would augment the water supply to the city by being able to collect more water and collect clean water. Because the spring boxes, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar, but for new people in the council, those spring boxes are over 58 years old. They weren't installed properly in Austin. The city engineer can speak to this as well, but they're floating, so they're not capturing all the water that's underneath in the way that they were installed. So they need to be correctly designed and correctly installed and updated. And that's the reason why we do that. And the end result would be more water to the city, hopefully reducing our needs for restrictions next summer and getting more water captured, which is the end goal for this whole project. I think that politically, it's a good idea for us to pursue this grant because we're on the governor's radar, we're on the legislator's radar. People know that we need water money. However, the points come into play and we don't... We would only receive 29 out of 47 points, and I'll tell you why. We have a higher population of people. They're looking to fund small cities, so we lose two points for that. Our average income household is too high, particularly because of Sinclair and the prison. We just make more than most of the state, so we lose five points for that. Our unemployment rate is too low. We lose one point for that. We miss points because we received CARES funding. They're trying to fund people that didn't get that ARPA grant, the first ARPA fund that was a direct fund, not the grants. We missed three points for that. We do not have a designed, ready-to-go project. We missed three points for that. And the grant loses points for being a water project, and I don't know why that is. I can't figure out the rationale, but that's four points. So... The second part of that is that it requires a match, and we feel that the 51% match would be the best, and the city manager can speak to that as well, in terms of providing us an extra point for funding. I provided on the breakout on your board docs of what each amount is. So 50% or more is five points total. Then you go down from 36% to 49%, only four points. 26% to 35%, three points. 16% to 25%, two points. Applicants providing 15% or less receive one point, and less than 5% receive zero points. So we really felt it was important to capture that extra point just because it could be the tipping point for us getting this grant or not. Now, the funding for the 51% match would require $955,014.27 from the city, 717 of which would come from previously allocated ARPA impact funds that we had. We received less on a grant than we had expected, so that money got freed up. And then we also need the additional... $218,014 out of the General Fund designated toward the water fund. So those are the issues on the table. It's a counsel's pleasure whether they want me to proceed with the grant or not, whether we have the money to proceed with the grant or not. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I don't think we have any questions for you now from you. Tag, you're it.
Okay.
Okay? Because I'm gonna need to understand the 717,000 from the 900 and whatever. That leaves us whatever that we are actually gonna add to the 717 that we didn't spend, correct?
Okay, the 717 is Impact Assistance Fund.
Right.
And so in this year's budget, we had budgeted 1.292 million out of Impact Assistance for water infrastructure, basically. 535,000 of that is going towards the Y2 contract at the pre-treatment plant. So that leaves the remainder, which is basically 717,000, available in Impact Assistance that is budgeted towards the water line, you know, the transmission line. As part of the ARPA II grant, we had to have a match. And so we allocated those funds towards the match of the ARPA II grant, and then we found out that we were unsuccessful in that, and then we made sure that those funds were freed up, okay, again, to put towards the transmission line. So we feel that that would be the obvious choice to go to as part of the grant are those funds since they're already budgeted in the budget towards that. The 200 and some odd thousand out of the General Fund would just have to come out of General Fund reserves. We just have to pull that out of the General Fund. Now, the reason we're not asking for a budget amendment on that is it will not be expended in this fiscal year. Okay? Because our fiscal year ends the end of June. So what we would do is commit it to be put towards the match, and then it would end up in the fiscal year '24 budget towards that project.
Does all of that money end up in the fiscal '24?
Yes.
So all, everything, the 717, the additional 200 and some odd thousand?
Correct.
All of that is gonna end up?
Correct. So the 717 would have to roll into next year's budget. In other words, we would just have to rebudget it in that year, and we would ensure that it is not spent this fiscal year.
Okay. Councilman Weisenberg?
The seven, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the 700 that is already previously allocated by the former counsel, so it's more of an understanding on that aspect. It was already allocated. We did not receive the grant. We pulled back out of the grant. That freed up that money. Therefore, we have this money left in more so terms of people can understand that might not have been sitting up here prior. I just... It's worrisome, though, that we're only at 29 points out of 47 to go for this grant again. And it's disheartening that we're losing points over stuff every time, it seems. I think this is the way we have to go, honestly, at this point in time, and it's not a great feeling to know we're at 29 points out of 47. I understand that the governor is on our side, the legislators are on our side, or so said. I will say that because I personally spoke to the governor before the last round and before the rate increase on the water. And, you know, it's not totally up to the governor, even though he's... And, you know, it's not totally up to the governor, even though he sits on that, but I think we have no choice, in my opinion, to try and gain some of this money from the ARPA funds. I think we need good representation there. I think as a governing body, we need to put people there that can be there and show our presence, saying we are in need of this. We don't have to speak, but a presence is shown, and whatever it takes to get this kind of funding, I mean, to help out with this water situation, the crisis we're going to be in, I mean, we've got to be willing to step up and do it.
And on your point, Chris, I think that because we're on the governor's radar and the legislator's radar, they're going to wonder why we don't apply if we don't. Here we are saying, we need money, we need money, we need money, and then there's a funding source, and there's no application, and they're going to wonder why.
Councilman Wells?
I just wanted to say, I can't think of anything more worthy than to spend general funds on than the water structure, and I don't think we have a choice. I think we need to try.
Councilman Lumen?
Sorry, not used to being called that. I just have a question. Is the only way to gain points is by matching funds?
There's other avenues of gaining points, but the list I went through showed what we were going to miss because we don't qualify under certain criteria. And it's really geared towards actually smaller communities with less population that didn't get the ARPA direct funding, things like that. So we're in a question with points, and that's why, you know, part of the reason why we lost the grant last time is we were lower on points than most of the entities because we have these factors.
Andrea, so do we get those points back at the 51% match? Is that what we get back? Do we get back the five?
51% would give us five points.
So we're back at 34?
No, no, that's including.
Oh, that's already including that?
Yes, that's including.
Okay.
It's crazy.
May I make an addition?
Hold on one sec. Councilman Weisberg?
The other 200,000 that will be coming out of the general fund, is that, Tom, I know I talked to you previously in our one-on-ones, is that coming out of the reserves, out of the amount of money? I can't remember the whole amount, honestly, but...
Yeah, so after the 2021 audit that we had, we had about 12 million in what they called unrestricted, and that's where this would come out of.
Okay, just so we're clear, everybody's clear where that other 200,000 or plus would come from. Thank you.
Austin?
Okay, so in our resolutions?
The first resolution?
Yeah.
And the second resolution?
That's the first resolution.
Okay, first resolution.
We need a friendly amendment. If you look, if you go to the resolution, the attachment on 8E. That's 8F. If you go to 8E and open the resolution, it's saying 2,800,000.
This just came to our attention.
I'm so sorry.
That is the old amount before we scaled it down. So we would like a friendly amendment here.
I would make a friendly amendment to that.
I'm still confused about where you are.
Yeah.
I have, I don't have an attachment for that.
It's on the bottom.
Okay.
8E.
Okay.
And the amount says 2,809,000.
Go click there. Now click into the resolution here.
I just did that.
And it's 2,800,000 right there on the first paragraph.
Right. What is it supposed to be?
Yeah, so just a question for Andrea.
Yeah.
So the engineer's estimate has it at 1,872,546.58, which is about $20.42 difference. Is that something that they are going to look at at SLIB where you have a $20 difference for the resolution?
I will do a friendly amendment to do that number.
What are your issues?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's for?
The resolution.
8E. And we're going to change on AF also.
We're not there yet.
No, we're not there.
When that comes, can you just provide us that number first?
Yep.
Thank you.
I don't know who seconded.
I think I seconded that, and I would second a friendly amendment also.
Okay.
So we have a first and a second on this resolution?
But the writing, the motion has to be adjusted because it has 1,872,577. So I need to, we're going to need to do an amendment to the motion.
I thought I did that.
You did the friendly and seconded, yes. Just on the amount, so the amount needs to change.
So I just need to change it to, what was it? 1,800? What was? What was one? It's 1,872,000. 58 cents. All right, I know you're worried about this writing. Thank you.
And Jackie, you already did a friendly motion to that?
Yes.
Okay, and you seconded?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded in a friendly motion with the new numbers, correct?
1,872,546.58, correct?
That's correct.
I just want to clarify that we have a friendly that gets you to your 1,872,546.58. So we have a friendly that gets you to that, correct? Okay. We have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion?
So is this going to change the matching amount?
Yes.
What is the matching amount now?
Well, it was incorrect on AF. It said 218, and it should have been 238, but now we're taking it up to 239.
Can we vote on the one that we're talking on?
Yeah, he's just checking to see. We'll get there. Okay? So I have the motions on the floor, okay? And we've been moved and seconded, and we've had discussion. So clerk, would you open online voting, please?
All right, online voting is open.
A lot of numbers.
Yes.
Figuring that out. They're tough. I couldn't do it.
All right, online voting has closed. A motion passes with 68.
Okay, we're moving on to authorizing the submission of a local government American Rescue Plan. Councilman Weisenberg?
Before a motion is made, could we get the correct numbers that would possibly be in the motion needing to be made so we're not friendly amending?
Right, because there's two or three places on this next.
If, do you see, do you see the motion, and if you do, if you could look at the motion that would be made, can you give us the numbers in that order possibly?
The first one's the 51%.
51% is going to stay, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. And then the next amount, okay, so Tom, you have your number video on here.
Okay, so...
51%, the new number is?
Okay, the 717 will remain the same out of Impact Assistance.
Okay.
The general fund match will be 237,998.76.
That's general, you said?
Yep.
Okay, and then?
What's the total?
What's the total amount at that time?
The total amount is 954,998.76.
All right, let's see if we can do this.
Okay. Councilman Weisenberg?
I'd move to authorize the approval of matching funds of 51%, totaling 954,998.76, with 717,000 out of Choke Cherry Impact Funds, which will be carryover from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024, and the general fund cash reserve match of 237,998.76. Hold on one sec. Will be appropriated in fiscal year 2024 for the Local Government American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Grant in the amount of... The, that's this other number.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sir, for portions of Phase Two Rehabilitation of the Water Service Delivery System.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Wow.
Now that we know.
Thank you for those numbers.
One question, Pam?
We need to just make sure the second resolution, the motion is correct, and now we need to match the number.
Okay. So that the numbers are fitting in the spaces they should be in?
The motion is correct.
Okay.
That's your job next time.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a lot of other changes. Because Terry's not here.
Seeing no discussion?
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say thank you for all the hard work, dedication. Andrea, oh, she's walking away.
I'm sorry.
Andrea, thank you for your hard work, dedication. We really do appreciate what you've done and what, in your time here, and this, I know it's not easy to do that kind of work, and thank you very much.
Okay, clerk, would you open online voting, please?
You've got to bear with me.
I'm, don't worry, I'm barren.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I just need to make sure all my numbers, because I had it written out as numeric.
It's okay.
It was tough to go back and forth and try and keep your, where you're going to be at. Got them right, I think. It's not as easy as it may seem. No, but I mean, that would have been easy to read. Right. You know? No, I know, I'm like, uh, wait, wait.
Vice Mayor, who seconded? Councilwoman Weisberg was first, and I don't know who seconded there. Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. So I will just read the motion, make sure I have all the numbers correct for everybody, okay? Just to make sure I'm correct, you guys are correct, but I just need to make sure my numbers are. Move to authorize the approval of matching funds of 51%, totaling 954,998.76, with 717,000.000.00 out of Choke Cherry Impact Funds will be carried over from fiscal year '23 to FY '24, and the general fund cash reserve match of 237,998.76 will be appropriated in the fiscal year '24 for the Local Government American Rescue Act, Plan Act, ARPA, Grant in the amount of 1,872,546.58 for a portion of Phase Two Rehabilitation of the Water Service Delivery System.
Awesome.
Correct.
Is that good?
Yes.
That is the numbers I have wrote down.
Thank you.
Austin, you're good.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Have you read it back to us? We're all in agreement here?
Yes.
Clerk, would you open online voting, please?
Thank you. Okay, so online voting is open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm fine, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on. Approval?
You have to bear with me one moment.
I'm barren.
Thank you. Okay. We are good, thank you.
Okay, moving on to approve awarding a water project funding and public relations. Councilman Wells?
I move to award the Water Project Funding and Public Relations Professional Services Agreement to WWC Engineering of Laramie, Wyoming in the amount of $86,200.
Okay. I have a first?
Oh, it's second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Austin?
City Council, I'd like to make a quick presentation to you on what we were liking to do with regards to our pursuit for USDA loans and drinking water and also grant applications. So in this, what I've done is I've requested proposals from two firms, one being WWC Engineering and another is Sunrise Engineering for the purposes of assisting us through the process of applying for the loans and grants, and especially with USDA. And so with that, what they've done is they've provided us the proposals, and the one that was the most qualified for this particular work would be WWC Engineering out of their Sheridan office. They would come and present to you at four city council meetings, a progress of the project over the next nine months to a year. It'll include a website where the public can go to on the particular project. The project itself may have its own brand. The project will have 200 hours of discretionary assistance for grant applications, so especially like what we just saw with the ARPA grant work that had been done, this would be an instance where they could assist in that. A lot of what we do with the city with other engineering firms on grants, and a lot of cities historically, is that they do not pay them to do that work. And we need to be paying people who are working to help us. And so this would be an opportunity to have someone to pay to help us with this and the engineering estimates as a third party. The other aspect is they would provide public information over the phone. Anybody who wants to call in on the phone number, they'll be allowed, they have an ability to do that for the city regarding the project specifically. They have a qualified public information officer from, had worked previously in government in Cheyenne, that she would be on tap for us for this project. It would just be a very good move forward, in my opinion, to go through with this consultant professional services agreement. And the reason why is because this will really help carry us forward quickly, as quickly as possible through this process. It'll be the most organized process possible. It'll help you see graphically what the project will look like. It has what is called a Gantt chart with a critical path that helps you to visually see the progress as a timeline, where you have the most important critical activities so that you can quickly focus on what needs to be done to get this done as quickly as possible so that we have a sustainable water supply. I recommend that we move forward with this work. Tom, is there anything that you would like to add on this, sir?
On the agenda, you have 100 hours of grant time, and I believe we want 200.
Oh, yes.
But, so that would have to be changed.
And so if you look into the attachment that is provided... The attachment, I believe, is the billing rate schedule. That's the schedule of charges. And then you have the larger attachment, which shows...
Isn't this already clarified under staff analysis?
It may be, but...
However, the city staff increased the fee an additional eighteen thousand dollars to cover the additional one hundred hours of discretionary loan and grant application assistance?
Yes, it's in the Adobe PDF of the proposal under, uh, line item number four. It went from eighteen thousand to thirty-six thousand dollars for it to be the two hundred. Great question. Thank you.
Councilman Weisenberg, sorry.
Yeah, this is coming out of GL account. Uh, it has a budget of two hundred thousand to pay for the agreement. Explain the GL account for number one, if you could do that.
So it's for professional services, uh, for the Water Enterprise Fund under fifty-one forty-three oh five. I believe it's item two oh five, uh, which has a budget of two hundred thousand dollars. Currently, we do not have any charges that I'm aware of against that particular GL account. Uh, this is, I believe, a good use of those funds that we had budgeted in the prior year. It is a total of ninety-eight thousand one hundred dollars. So it effectively take up half of that budget. The other proposal that we received from Sunrise Engineering was for a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. It's not about the cost in these evaluations for proposals, but it's about the experience. In my opinion, this is the best choice. It's not about the price. Usually when you unseal bids for professional services according to state statutes, you cannot know the fee until you open the letter, uh, until you've made the decision, then you open the letter. So in this case, it's not about the fee. And this is, yeah, this is one where it did not officially go out to RFP. This was just a request that I made to these two firms.
Councilman Weisenberg.
So with that, I, is there other firms that would possibly be available also that's might not just be locally to the state of Wyoming or, uh, around the, this region and whole area and everything? Cause when, when I read the cons on this, it, it just says, uh, it could take up to five years. Is that just the alternate firm, the other firm you're talking about for sure? Or is it this firm? Cause this says...
Great question.
It could take up to five years to...
Yeah.
Gain the loan from USDA.
Actually, that's a perfect question. Thank you. So that is because of the Level One study, the master plan, so to speak, that we're looking at being granted for the quarter million dollars that, uh, Senator Hicks worked so hard to get on, uh, for the next legislative session. That is a five-year process. That's gonna take five years. And I know it's, it's, I know I've been told by him that it was a two-year process. That's not the case, it's five years. If we don't move forward with USDA, if the city of Rawlins does not move forward with USDA and drinking water, it may take up to five years before you find the, the funding to be able to even begin work. And they are going to tell you what the project is going to look like. It's not gonna be based on what you think is a good choice and your experience in the city of Rawlins is gonna be what their consultant tells them. And they're gonna propose alternatives and a series of other projects that may not be part of our capital plan. It does not necessarily match our capital plan either. So with what is gonna happen with WWDC, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I still think it should be done. I think that the master plan should absolutely be done. But if we wait and we rely on that, you are going to probably see major infrastructure failures in the next five years. That could have been caught, in my opinion, in, in a two-year period.
Thanks for the explanation, cause when I read that, I mean, it, it looks totally different than what you described, right? So I appreciate that. Uh, what is the timeline possibly for the USDA at this point in time?
The, the shortest amount of time is nine months, which I said close to five months ago. And so with that, this creates a level of accountability, having the consultants help coach the city of Rawlins through the process. And so I believe that this will be a nine-month process if we go this route.
From now?
From, from the time that we approve this.
So we're five months behind the ball?
Yes.
That's it, sorry.
Okay.
Just frustrating, you know, to know that we're already five months behind the ball when it was discussed months ago, that, and, and said, let's get this started. And, and we had alternative routes at the same time to pursue this at the same time. That's why it's so frustrating that we're still nine months out. We have to have water for our citizens.
Okay, well, it's been, um, the motion's on the floor. Um, is there any further discussion? Thank you, Austin.
You're welcome.
No further discussion? Clerk, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
Okay, moving on to the next item, uh, city of Rawlins rates. Mr. Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Mayor. City ordinance provides that in the month of January, the city council will review the rates and fees that the city charges. So you have in, uh, attachment to this, we have put out all of the rates and fees that the city charges. And what you will see in there is that there are several different types of fees that are charged for different, different purposes, okay? Within our four enterprise funds, which is our water, sewer, landfill, recycling, the current year budget has budgeted, uh, losses in all four of those funds, to the point that we would have to go into cash reserves within those funds to balance the budget. And in, and in looking at where we are today, I think we're in line with the budget. And so, um, the water fees, we went through a water rate study that is, uh, that, that has been adopted. And so we will be looking at, through the budget process, what it will take to balance the other three, uh, funds. The recycling was increased as well, uh, I did, uh, just recently. And, and that fund is actually, uh, showing some, some income in there over expense, which will add to our cash reserves. The landfill sewer funds have not been looked at since I've been with, with the city and so we will look at those, like I said, through the, the budget process. It only, that makes sense to me to balance those funds after we look at budget the expenditures. So those are the four through the, the enterprise. In the, the rate schedules you had, uh, appendix J is recreation. Now, we've reviewed this with the Recreation Director and there's a couple fees for services in here that we no longer provide and we, we, we will make a list of those. The recreation fund is, um, included in our general fund. So it is not an enterprise fund where the fees have to cover the expenditures. It is in the general fund so it can draw off of, off of the general fund. So we do not budget the rates to cover all of the expenditures. But in, instead, what we do on our general ledger is we, we keep the recreation funds in a separate fund and we transfer general fund money over into there to make up the difference. And so during the budget process, we will look at those rates and we will see, um, the operating transfer over if we can minimize that at all through the, the rates. And we'll see where we're at and, um, but I would, would like to have the expenditures to look at to see what we are trying to tie up to. The, the rest of the funds that, that you'll see in here are mostly, mostly general fund fees that we charge. There are administrative fees, which are the business license, liquor license and those types of things. And then there's the building fund where we have contractor licenses. And there's, there's building permits of, of appendix C, depot rental rooms and appendix D, planning is in F. And the cemetery is in appendix G. And then Public Works is, is appendix I. Now, I have reviewed all these with the department heads and there isn't any obvious, um, uh, changes that would have to be handled, you know, right off. These rates are a couple of years old. And when, when we went, went through there, we feel that they are still adequate at this time. And we will watch through the budget process, through the expenditure process, and we will tie what we can of these to the cost for that service. And then we, we will bring, um, throughout the, uh, budget process, a recommended resolution with those changes.
To all of them?
To all of them that we have, that we would have.
Okay. Is there a way at some point for us to tie, um, rate increases to something that's logical?
Yes, and, and that's why, to me, I, I feel, um, expenditures are part of that. What, what is logical, also what, what service we are providing. And I would like to do exactly that. Throughout the budget processes, I'd like to justify what all of these rates are and what they serve.
Okay. Any other questions? It's Tanya.
Were there increases last year?
To my knowledge, the, 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 the last time that a lot of these were looked at were two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen?
Yeah, and so the only increases would be through the water and recycling.
Okay.
And that's to my knowledge. Uh, the recreation and all of those have remained pretty consistent through that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? No, thank you. We'll be moving into the next portion of the meeting, which is...
Did I miss? When I read on the agenda that you were having discussions of Rawlins water rates, the food water rates, I thought this is the time to speak about my issue. Did I misread that?
No, it's just, it's a discussion about the water, Rawlins rate. If you, what is your...
This entails that and I'll keep it short because I see you guys are pretty busy.
Come on up here, sign up your name and let me know where you're going here.
For sticking around to the end.
I did. Okay, I see you guys have big fish to fry and I, I appreciate that. Getting back to those rotten old Glen addition water rate increases, I appreciate that Mr. Sarvi threw out a number of sixty-five dollars a month as a compromise. I appreciate that, you've been very good to listen. I don't know if, if people are hearing though, the perspective. I've determined that the city needs to pay for the water it's treating and sending through the master meter. I think that's the main issue. The water goes through the meter, y'all spent some money and time treating it. You want paid for that. I get that. Unfortunately, the master meter readings are just not fail-safe. Mr. Sarvi has mentioned that the one particular residence that's on there, he forgot to deduct that from, not he in particular, but it was neglected to be taken off. Um, the amount of leakage, Mr. Sarvi, again, I don't mean to be pointing a finger at you. He deducted five hundred dollar, five hundred gallons a month for certain months where they know the, uh, it was a significant leaks. I have in my notes from the two and, twenty-eleven rate increase where the utility form at that time said those leaks down there run five to ten gallons a minute. So while I appreciate he's acknowledging there needs to be a reduction because of the leaks, five hundred gallons a month is, is not even a drop in the bucket, it's like five hundred gallons in two days down there. So that, I'm just throwing that out there. Uh, three, uh, and this isn't prepared, but I'm cutting it down already. At home, I use twenty-eight hundred gallons of water at the new rate of three dollars and forty-eight cents apiece. Then increased, in addition to the flat rate increase, which we all are aware of, that increased my usage to nine dollars and seventy-four cents. I'm glad to pay it. At my lot at the Glen addition, I use approximately six hundred gallons a minute, which would increase my water bill two dollars and eight cents a month. According to the new city rate that we have now, which y'all are considering amending, I'm using seventy-nine hundred and eight gallons at three forty-eight, uh, charge. That's where you get the twenty-seven fifty-two in addition to the base rate. I don't know why y'all expect the Glen addition to pay that much more per gallon using the numbers you guys have put out. And I'll, I'll end this up by saying I got a card from the city. In July of twenty-two, I was paying twenty-nine dollars a month for my lot. Um, for three months, I paid thirty-two dollars a month because of the increase in recycling fee and all of a sudden I jumped to seventy-five dollars a month. So to go in five months' time from twenty-nine to seventy-five, that's just inequitable. And the, the meter rating, we, we can't grow gardens down there, we don't flush toilets, we don't take showers. We're, you're paying for agricultural water use. And trying to be fair to the residents of the city, we're on the same level when really we're not. And the city had to take the meters out apparently back in the eighties sometimes. We all wished we had meters. In twenty-eleven, meters were discussed strongly and the council at that time suggested we get little handheld meters and go on the honor system. I think people kind of thought, this'll tide us over, but we know it's not gonna work. But the cost of putting meters of the Glen addition is outrageous. You guys don't have the money to deal with the problems you have now. I just don't see that happening. It's one of those, I'd like to see it, I don't see it happening and if y'all can tell me different, prove me wrong. But until then, I don't want to carry an added burden to support the water system just because I have a lot at the Glen addition. And I think the numbers, if I'm actually, if I'm gonna pay for my neighbors, my neighbors who might have thirty animals, that's fine. I've gotta pay for the leaks going down the road in the dirt, that's fine. But if you wanna be equitable to everyone, um, I'd like you to be a little bit more equitable to us. And just look at the different numbers. There's more numbers than the master reading. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, no, you're fine. Tom, we had discussed the, the, the readings and everything, what the prior council meeting or two, a couple of meetings ago. Is that kind of the resolution you're looking at bringing? Is along that line of the usage at that point in time?
Yes, that's correct. So we looked at the usage from one year back and, and that's what the original, um, I wasn't, I wasn't, but, you know, the, the original seventy-five, I, I was able to back into that through that year to see that how it's calculated. So it is, uh, the same. We did back off the other meter and then, um, the numbers I, I shared were in, in thousands. So it wasn't just five hundred, I believe it was five thousand. That, that was, that was backed off if you convert the numbers. But yes, the, uh, recommendation I will have will, will be on the actual numbers that flow through the Glen addition master meter, less the ones that go through the subsequent meter, with an estimation based on a five-month average after the major leak was fixed. And it was a major leak. So we're gonna back that off and then recalculate what it is.
So the discussion that you and I had had... So, the discussion that you and I had had up here, you know, when I had asked about that, that number is gonna kind of align. So, so what I'm referring to is I, I talked to a, a local rancher that has a stake at the Glen addition. And that individual went through, kind of counted up heads of animals and stuff, right? And is a well-known rancher, understands agriculture, the agricultural business and stuff. And he had kind of thrown a number out to me about water usage, okay? So what I had asked Mr. Sarvey about was what that proposed usage was. And I don't have my notes with me, so don't quote me on it, but I believe the number that, that you had discussed the last time was relevantly close to the number that the, the rancher threw out, right? That should be about the average usage throughout that. And, and we're talking 1,000 gallons possibly, or something like that. I think it was really close, so...
Was that per month, sir?
Yes, yes, it was per month. So, I, I think the work that Tom is doing and, and that your committee has done and everything else, I think those numbers are gonna be closer aligned than what is projected.
Can I speak?
Hold on one second. Tom?
Well, one thing that, and I, idea brought up at the meeting was for a 24-hour period, we would shut off all of the taps. And then we, we would measure what goes through the meter because we, we know it's going through the meter and it is not hitting the tap, it's going into the ground. And we will have a much better estimate as to what that is.
What, what's the projected water loss, the percentage? Because I know you calculate, there's, there's a percentage already calculated for leaks and water loss at that point in time, after it goes through the meter. So what was that projection?
The, the hard thing at the addition, though, at the Glen addition, is with the infrastructure we have, we don't know if the leaks are on the city side or on the Correll side. It could be anywhere, anywhere in there. And so, we, we do know citywide, we lose about, about 30% of our treated water from the plant to the actual meters. So I don't know if, but like I said, this is a lot smaller stretch. But I, that, that, I guess that's why we are estimating the best that we can.
May I make a point as well, please? I think that one thing that needs to be considered as well...
Hold on. Direct the question to me.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Tanya, you had a question?
Yes. When we decide what is a fair rate, and that is put out, for instance, your $65, will the residents be repaid with the, the 75 for the months that they've been spending that? You know, that $10 difference will be paid back?
Our recommendation will be that that is refunded.
Okay.
That will be our recommendation to the council.
Okay. Austin?
Yes, sir. Honorable Vice Mayor, the question or the point that I would like to make too is that there have been trucks filling up tanks at the Glen addition, and the water is leaving the Glen addition. It's also another thing to consider where it may, especially in a very dry season, have a pretty big impact on how much water's coming out of there. Almost half the water may be leaving the Glen addition by water trucks and tanks, which does have an impact on how we calculate them.
Isn't there an ordinance for that?
Uh, really?
With, with...
Is it water that's, just for clarification, is this water that someone's driving in with a truck, loading up and taking back out? Is it coming out of someone's stall? Is it coming off of the main meter? Where's it coming from?
Yes, sir, it is coming out of someone's tap within the Glen addition, and they're taking that water elsewhere.
Okay. Okay.
So that further complicates the issue. And there's an ordinance against selling water in city limits from the city taps.
The easiest solution to this, obviously, is that they have taps. That's the simplest solution to have. And I say that, and everybody, I, I know that that's expensive. I understand how expensive that is. But a, a house, your house, you're responsible for your tap and your, your meter in your house. You're responsible for it. So, so that it can measure. Now, do they lose, Mike, don't they lose? They do, right? They lose their accuracy over time, and they have to be replaced. The new meters aren't quite as bad because they're not impeller-driven, but they're, they still lose accuracy over time. Without having any way of measuring what's going into anyone's individual property, you're basically going, let's flip a coin and see what looks, what comes down right here. Okay? And the solution that was provided by the committee when they came up and said, we could just shut it off for 24 hours and read what we're losing, that works up until someone rolls in with a, you know, 150-barrel truck and loads up 5,500 gallons worth of water and rolls on out of there. Because you don't know which one of those people just gave away 5,500 gallons. You don't know which one it is. The only way to solve that is with a tap. And even if there's leaks, which we know there is because 30% of the city's water is running underneath the ground somewhere, if there's leaks, you still, you, you won't know where any of them are, you know? In general, that whole entire area should be torn up and new piping put in, and all-new taps and everything else would make Mike's job a lot easier. That'd make it a lot simpler for him. And it would make it more accurate for everybody that has a stall out there. So if you want to roll in and take 5,500 gallons, go ahead. It's gonna show up on your tap. You'll pay for it, it'll be on your bill, and that's okay. Because if you want to take it somewhere else, which you're not supposed to do inside the city, you still already paid for it, at least, that far. Ms. Pam?
Mr. Vice Mayor, can Mike, though, when those big days happen, that throws up, at least we can start until we get taps, could we track those days? If there's certain days, I mean, Mike, yeah, I mean, you know, you, I mean, that's how we found out the last time this was happening, that we knew there was a big surge. So could we start trying to track what day it is? I need to play I Spy, but, I mean...
The problem with the Glen addition is there is a section in there that's a six-inch line.
Right.
This past November, there was a break in that line, and that was well visible on that meter. The rest of it is an inch and a quarter line. And a lot of the taps down there that go onto property is either three-quarter inch or an inch, so there's not much difference. So there are small leaks throughout the system. And that's what he was saying, is it's kind of hard to say, is it off the city's name? Which I'm sure there is leaks down there. But how much of it is off the city main? And how much of it is on the tap that runs into the service, or the service line into each lot? Now, the other issue with shutting them down, some of those curb stops can't be found. There is no rhyme or reason as to where they are. Some are at the beginning of the lot, some are at the back of the lot, some are in the middle of the lot, some have never been found in years. And it's all plastic line, a lot of it's plastic line, so we can't even hook up our machine to locate.
We don't have it grounded.
So, I mean, we're afraid some lots don't have a leak or a break because there's no way of finding, I mean, well, if they do, you know where the line is because that's where the water's coming out of.
Right.
Some of it, we have no idea where to shut it off at because there's no rhyme or reason as to where. This past summer, I had two of our guys go down there and locate every curb stop that they can actually see and mark it on a drawing map, small map that we have. Or if something came up, those we knew where they were. But there's still several lots down there either don't have a tap or shut off because it's connected to the lot next to them. It's kind of hard to tell. So if we were to go down there and shut every one that we knew off, doesn't mean that they're all gonna be off. So that's gonna be hard to tell.
But, I'm sorry, Mike, and I see what you're, but could we still, I mean, we still know if there's a tanker pulling out.
Yes, and that's...
I mean, we have, the, the, the leaks have a day and day off 2007. So that's not gonna change, but I think the big push-ups, the big chunk of water, we should be able to track.
Yeah, you should. And the city, on every meter they have, they do have in their own system inside city hall, where we are now, they do have the ability to know when something's leaving at a higher rate than normal. Yeah, so we know how to track that. So, okay. Councilman Weisenberg?
One other thing, I, I just wanna, you could clarify this, but you, you had spoke about, you know, bigger fish to fry, pretty much. We got a lot of other projects and, and don't see how we're gonna afford this, really. But if I'm not mistaken, there was money allocated in the amount, possibly, I, I thought there was like $50,000 allocated to some of that for that. If I'm not mistaken, can, it maybe check into that, too? I can't remember at all, but...
Okay, I'll look into that.
Okay.
Okay, this is what I wanted, was more information. And like I say, no disrespect, we just disagree. Mr. Sarvey's job is to get money for the city. But just using those master meter readings is not the accurate way to determine the best rate. So if y'all got that message and can consider that, I appreciate it. And again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're done with discussion. Now, we're due to go into executive session, but we don't have anything. I was just told that we don't have anything. So if none of you want to just inadvertently go into executive session, which clearly you do not, then I would call this meeting adjourned.
We have, we have two minutes, are they not?
They can be postponed to the next meeting.
Yeah, she can postpone, yeah, she has postponed...
I don't believe that we need to go into executive session just to look at those minutes.
No.
So we just need to make a motion on the floor to postpone those, or we can...
Yeah. So before I close the meeting, Mr. Weisenberg?
I'd move to postpone the executive session minutes of January 3, 2023, regular city council meetings.
Oh, they're underneath there.
And January 11, 2023, special council, city council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk, you ready over there? No? Okay. You just tell me when.
Oh, can you turn your laptop off? Can you turn the laptop? If you go to power. It's gone. Oh, my gosh.
You told me I was quit, Doc?
Yeah.
It already decided.
So Councilmember Weisenberg was, made the motion, and then Gardner's second.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Online voting is open.
Yay.
Oh, you abstained.
You have to abstain.
Because she don't know what's in those.
Oh.
How do we know?
Well, we're just postponing. I think she might be able to actually...
I'm sorry, on the computer, is it just the meetings?
Ah, yay.
Um, we have, I have a CS sort email. I don't think you can do anything with it. Okay. I just wondered if it was just specific for the meetings.
The motion passes with five yeas and one abstaining. Councilmember Lee, abstained.
Okay. So if there's no, nothing else to discuss, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move.
So, so move. Thank you. You guys have a great evening. We're sorry that took that as long as that it did. We apologize.
It's not that long. Look, it's 11:30.
Oh, stop, Terrell.
There are currently no power options.
No power options available.
That's what it says when I click on it. Look! How does that, isn't yellow? Is, uh, is Joe Sineback...
Yes, yes, he's back today.
Like, just since there's no, there are currently no power options available to power my computer off, so...